Did she? No, it's Dan.
Okay, you might go into the tables. It is five thirty, are we ready?
Oh, that's right. I forgot that last meeting.
I think we can go ahead and get started. I feel we can go ahead and get started. He'll be here in a minute. All right. Calling to order, the Parowan City Council meeting. It is, someone's car alarm's going off. Okay, it's August twenty eighth and it is five thirty one P M. Thank you for being here tonight. When I pulled up, I was like, oh, there are all these cars here, people. I think it was your unfamiliar cars. I parked across the street though, so just in case people want to take the spaces. So, we are going to have our opening ceremony tonight by Callie Bassett. She will start with a prayer and then lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our kind Father in Heaven, we are grateful for the opportunity we have to meet tonight. We ask that that will be with us, that we will have a good spirit here, that we will work together for the good of the community and for those who live around us. We are grateful for all the blessings that has given to us. We're thankful for our associations, for the beautiful town we live in and for the friendships we enjoy. Please bless us again this night, that all will go well, that we will work towards progress for the city and that we will be able to accomplish those things that we need to this night. And we ask this humbly in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
All right, does the council have any conflicts with the agenda this evening or any personal interest in any of the items?
No, Mayor.
All right, the time is now yours for public comment. If you're here to come speak about something that you would like to bring to the public council, you have three minutes. You don't have to say where you're from or your address. You basically can just say Parowan resident. So, this time is now yours. All right. Since Jeremy didn't make a beeline to the microphone, we'll move forward. We'll go into the consent agenda. This is the items that are generally approved by one motion. They are administrative in nature. Item five is the approval of city council meeting minutes from August fourteenth, twenty twenty five and August eighteenth, twenty twenty five. The approval of the warrant register for August twenty eighth, twenty twenty five and the approval of the P O number two to I R B Y forty seven thousand, eleven dollars and fifty cents for electrical wire from the power department. And then we have item eight, which is the approval of off premise beer license local consent for terribles number four, four, three. Okay, thank you for that correction. So, if there's a motion to approve this with the correction of that date?
I move to approve the consent agenda with the correction of August eighteen or nineteenth, twenty twenty five on the minutes.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. We're now going to move into our action agenda. We have item number nine and it is the fairground master plan presentation by Elliott Work Group Architects Engineers and we have Craig Elliott here. I just wanted to introduce him for a minute. We've been working together on a team to over this as this progresses and there've been a lot of pivots and considerations along the way. And he has been very open to really listen and to try to make this what it needs to be to best serve our county and obviously our community since it's in our backyard. But one of the points I wanted to make is, he said he'd present in person tonight. He didn't need to be zoomed in because he was coming in for the weekend to bring his family to the fair. Because he wanted to be sure he saw firsthand how that property flowed, how things worked, what it looked like. And I was just really impressed by that. So, I hope you have a great time at the Iron County Fair.
Thank you. Fair enough. It's all right, let's see if I can make this work. Okay. As the mayor said, I'm Craig Elliott. I'm a principal with Elliott Work Group. We're an architecture and planning firm. And we've been hired by Iron County to look at the fairgrounds and look at a twenty-five year master plan. How that interacts with the city and what could happen over time to improve the fairgrounds and continue, allow it to continue into the future. So, I thought it would be a good idea for us to at least give you an update on where we've been and what we're doing. There is also a flyer that's around and should be some information sent out to some other groups that has an access, a Q R code that gives you access to a questionnaire. So, there's an opportunity at this point that we're looking for additional public input and we'll be consolidating that information and looking at it with Iron County and with Parowan City to determine what modifications we'd need to make, if any, at the end of the assessment. It's an interesting project. The, it appears to me to be a very important part of the community. I come from a small town in Kansas, grew up in Tongonoxi, Kansas. It also is the home of the county fairgrounds for Leavenworth County. And it's a similar sized town as Parowan in some respects. It's not, it's not the county seat, but it does hold the fairgrounds. And when you understand what that's like and what it means to a community, I think it's really important. And so, when we started on the project, it was a, it was something that we really were looking forward to doing. As a background of our firm, we do a lot of different projects from sports facilities to master plans to housing, to affordable housing. One of the most recent things that we did in the sports world was we created all the venue diagrams for the Seminole to the Olympics for the International Committee and then we're awarded the twenty thirty-four games. So, we've been involved in a lot of different types of studies for different types of activities and particularly for event spaces. And ultimately, the fairgrounds is an event facility. So, what did we do? We took a look at a number of different things on the, on the fairgrounds and did an initial assessment. I'm gonna just go through these sheets so you can get an understanding that we've been working through a series of things. Trying to understand what the statistics are, what the usage is, how people work on the site and then do an analysis of each individual piece. So, in this document, I don't want to get into too much detail, but we assessed the arena, vendor and exhibit areas. I walked that today. It was good and gave me a good understanding what the experience was like, familiar to me. I thought there's not many people out right now, but I know this weekend, we're gonna be up here Saturday and try and be here when it's really busy. And so, that's one of my personal goals. We looked at the carnival area and what's going on there and how it set up its relationships to the rest of the activities on the site. And then we did assessments of the storage areas and we did some overall conclusions of each one of the assets. After that, we worked through a whole series of different concepts. We, we talked with a series of groups about different users. And one of the things that's high on the priority list currently is the ability to develop an indoor arena. So, we worked very closely trying to figure out what that looks like, what the sizes would be. There's also a written program that we provided to the county describing how that could work and what you would do with it. And this is the result of a series of studies. What you see here is, let's see if I can do this. Fingers don't work on track pads very well. One of our thoughts was how do we open up and create more of a presence for the fairgrounds? And if we move the indoor arena closer to, I think it's three hundred, we, you get, you get more of a presence for the fairgrounds from that side of the site, which is really the primary entrance that you see as you come in from town. It's close to here, quite frankly. It's, it is something that's sort of lacking at the current moment. You've got some nice gates that are put in. There's some entrance. It's been, I think, adapted over time based on the track that was there. And so, we really were asked to, let's forget about what the track was. Let's look at how these things functions and try and get the pieces in the right locations. So, we developed a concept where it has an indoor arena. We have an amphitheater. We've got covered stalls, which I think is really critical for an event like this. An expansion of the outdoor stalls that exist. Worked through the process of how we would connect with the horse trailers and access to that. This would allow us to move the carnival location a little closer so that it works better and you could stretch out the vendors along this area. The other thought was that that would give us the opportunity to green up this portion closest to the houses and create off times from the fair. More green space, more park-like space and really develop a way where you could connect. And create some larger gathering spaces during the fairgrounds. That's what these, these purple things here are, these long skinny, those are the booths that you would typically find that right now exist along the side of the exhibit building and then turn and come down. So, what we're doing is we're trying to pull it closer to the arena, closer to the exhibit building and developing a place to have an amphitheater where some of the other activities currently happen under a large tent in the parking lot. So, when you start to look at what that is, this gives you an idea of what the overall pieces are. On the bottom part of this, we're also suggesting that, let's see if I can find that. We're also suggesting that we provide some R V hookup locations. In addition to that, we've given some information and provided in this master plan of what you would expect to have in each one of these locations. What are the covered stalls? What are the open stalls? What's the expectation for that? And then this gives you an idea of what that amphitheater might be like. We just finished a new amphitheater in Heber. It opened this summer and it's been a great success. They're having a lot of activity in their city park. And they are now looking at expanding some of the opportunities around that. And then the indoor arena I'm showing here also, here's some of the key features to it. But what's interesting about indoor arenas is they have the opportunity to be an event facility that's greater than just rodeo or any other dressage type events or things like that. They become gathering places in a town. And there's, it's hard to find large, open volumes where you can have these kinds of events. And they provide a number of different training places from youth to adults. And then our discussion has been about doing additional bleachers around the existing arena, creating more of a place by doing that. Giving you a larger audience to expand the rodeo that's currently going on and really developing it as a place on the circuit that could be a positive long term. And then, most important thing, quite frankly, in this study is how are, how are you going to take care of the people that are coming to visit? And restrooms are critical. And if you've ever had, if you have children and you've had childrens of the opposite sex, you know that there's issues that you deal with. So, we're suggesting that you have both men's and women's and family restrooms and you spread them throughout the site that are close to all the activities. And so, those are some of the simple things that we're providing. And then we did additional studies of parking overflow. There's more detail in this and I don't want to take too much of your time. But this will be provided by the county and the city will have access to it. And if there's anything that you'd like to comment on currently or things that we might want to address, I'd love to hear it. But please take time to access the questionnaire that we have. The survey is going out and provide any additional input that you might like to do that with. So, I appreciate your time.
I don't know if there's any questions, but I wanted to say I've been on a working committee with these guys and they've put a lot of time. They took it, taken a lot of input from the county. These projects are probably, probably driving nuts with so many shareholders having interests. But they, they're consummate professionals. They've done a lot of work. Mayor's been on a lot of those calls as well. She could tell you the same.
Thank you.
So, it's your chance to ask any questions. I, I feel like the survey, I mean, it's one of those things that I don't know. I personally have been pushing surveys lately, but people are always like, they don't care what we think. These surveys are how you say what you think. And also, there's blanks that you can add additional information. And I can tell you from being in groups of people that review surveys, those comments are read to the group. Those things are talked about. You know, things come forward that no one thought of and that changed things. So, and sometimes it's that that has been thought of and this has been, you know, the direction for one reason or another. So, there's a lot to it. I'm not saying if you said, you know, this is what it needs to be, that that's gonna be what's gonna happen, but it does have an impact on the process. So, like, surveys are really important and they're terrible when you're in the middle of them, especially if they're longer, but that just means they're probably pretty good. You know, if it's like, do you, do you like this or not? That doesn't really tell people very much. But, so if you'll take the time to take the survey, and I thought it was a great idea to bring it to the fair, so there will be booths or two, there'll be different touchpoints for that. Do you know what that's gonna look like yet?
I'm not exactly sure how the, sure how the setup will be. We've provided these images that I've shown you on large boards. And they'll be on site and there will also be the questionnaire form that people can have access to. And I was just talking with Jamie just half hour ago, maybe an hour ago at this point. And she was getting ready to set that up and I'm not exactly sure where that's going to be, but I'm quite confident that she'll find the right place.
Okay, and it'll be in our upcoming newsletter. That'll be out on Monday or Tuesday and then it'll also be on our, our social media channels and please share it. I'm sure that the goal is to get as much input as possible, as much community involvement.
Absolutely.
Just one question, the one, if you can go back to the slide for additional parking, what's that red square on the right?
So, the red square on the right is a diagram that shows that there are other larger lots in town that may or may not be available during the fairgrounds if there's an extended use. And our suggestion was if you get to a point where you have a need for expanded parking, that you may set up a shuttle. And that shuttle would go to other lots. You would certainly have to work with school, with the churches. Our expectations are those are typically the lots that you would find that could work because they're not typically used at the same time that the fairgrounds are being used.
All I know the commissioner's talked about they're gonna make some improvements and I think it's a very large improvement. It looks really nice.
Are we sure that the link is still working? I had a, like, two people reach out to me and say that the link was not working. But, I mean, I've taken the survey, but it's been maybe two weeks ago. I tried it. Mine was a couple hours ago and it worked. Okay, okay.
I checked it this morning. It was working this morning.
Okay.
I know we made some changes, so you might have logged on when we were tweaking it. They were asking us to refine some of the questions and so we did do that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right, and we really are glad you're here this weekend and appreciate that extra homework.
Thank you.
And hopefully you'll have some feedback as well.
I would really appreciate that.
Enjoy your time. We'll move now to the item number ten, which is the possible approval of the Prime West Annexation Development Agreement. And we have Dallas Buckner here from the T V. So, just so you know, we're kind of experiencing a little bit of technical difficulty there.
What do you mean? It's on.
The, whatever imagery you put on, we haven't been able to have that in front of us. And that's why the screen had to be turned when the fairgrounds presentation was up. So, maybe it'll work. Okay.
Probably just.
Okay.
Can I talk to Dallas for one question? Where's your B Y U hat instead of the Texas Longhorns?
I've never been to a B Y U game.
Texas Longhorns is a long, far away.
Okay, thank you.
So, we pretty much wrapped up negotiations on this last time and, and, and have incorporated those into the agreement and have updated it with all the correct dates, Exhibit A, Exhibit B, Exhibit C, have made it complete from a document standpoint. And now we're just, if there's any other decision or discussion or anything, before we're ready to consider it.
The, the only thing I was gonna mention, Dan, is that I, I have the Mylar if this goes the way I'm hoping it goes, that I would give to Dan for signatures. But I did have the county surveyor review it and so we made some very, very minor tweaks, nothing to change the boundary or anything like that, but just some minor ones. So, just so that the very latest version gets in there. So, I can send you a P D F of that, but that's what's on this Mylar.
Okay. And we would want the digital version of that
Yes, that's what I mean.
To attach to the agreement if the agreement passes. And just so everybody knows, as far as process, the agreement is, needs to be considered first. An ordinance for the annexation would be considered second. Assuming both of those pass, then we start in on the process with what the Lieutenant Governor's Office requires. And they need the county surveyor to sign off on it. They have to double check Dallas's survey drawings and all that stuff. That's why he's been preemptively looking at that. Once that's all done, then everything is taken and shipped up to the Lieutenant Governor's Office, then they review it all and then they send back the certification and that all goes, gets recorded. So, that's, that's why we're, what we're talking about.
And this has mine and Clay's signatures on it, so it's just the mayor that is the last one after all those things are taken care of, so.
So, it doesn't function, it doesn't change the acreage? It doesn't change parcels? Nothing like that?
Nope.
Could you bullet point what they are, just so we have an idea, just so we don't have a big mess?
So, there was a couple of, there was a couple of just like clarifying bearings and distances he wanted added on there. So, like, I had the curves broken out. So, if you look at that one up towards the top, we had C one and C two, which is a broken curve. But we described the whole parcel instead of, we described the entire annexation boundary, but then there's three different parcels. So, like, we have C one and C two. This new version has C four that has the overall. So, if you read the description of the legal, it doesn't say thence along a curve a hundred feet, thence along a curve three hundred feet. The description up there says thence along the curve five hundred feet. And so, it was just clerical information. There was also just a, something that doesn't affect the boundary of it, but there was some title documents with properties to the south that we worked through that I added some additional language. Didn't, after reviewing with the title company, we didn't, I didn't change the boundary at all. I felt that based on the deeds we had found that this, the boundary as presented is still accurate and there's a basis based on historical deeds. But there was just some deed overlaps that, that, that I wanted to chase out a little bit further. And having done so, felt like the boundary that's shown on here is still, still accurate. But the, the changes that Clay, that the county, deputy county surveyor had made were, were just adding calls like that. There was another one on parcel three, if you blow that up. So, there's a bearing that's nine hundred and forty, five point eight feet. And then there's a little tiny L one up at the point. And again, those are two pieces that make the hole. And so, I added the whole, the overall bearing on that. So, there's a new bearing that has the, I think L one was like eight feet. So, now there's one that says nine hundred and fifty-four feet across there. So, they were all just minor labeling type.
So, it's good to get all this sussed out before we went through the process. And then if the county surveyor says, I need this changed, then it would be a technicality and
Yeah, then we're technically a change in Exhibit C or whatever of the annexation agreement, so.
We almost had that happen on another survey. There was an argument between the county surveyor and, they ended up, the county surveyor was wrong. But I thought we were gonna have to bring it back to the council.
Yeah.
All right. Do any of the council members have any questions?
Did you get that worked out on twelve hundred west with those adjacent property owners so you can take that road down through, you know, those Hollyoaks or whoever against that R V part?
So, we, we haven't done anything and, we haven't done anything as far as chasing that out. I did some research. I was the engineer on Evil Water. So, I had gone back through and seen our construction drawings and we did some parcel line adjustments. But we have not secured a right of way through there yet on twelve hundred. So, it's set up for a right of way, but until we're annexed in the city, there's not really a reason to approach them yet, but we're hopeful that we can come to an agreement to turn that into a right of way.
Isn't that supposed to be one of your access roads?
Well, it can be, but that's our burden to
We, we've dealt with it with different, different combinations of scenarios that the annexation agreement contemplates. So, it could be, but it doesn't have to be.
So, there's two then? What's the two?
That's for us to figure out. So, the way, the way it's written is it says we can, we can tie onto two hundred north. If we tie onto two hundred north from day one, we have to provide a second. We're hoping that our second is going to be twelve hundred west, but if it's not, then we have to figure something else out.
And if twelve hundred west is their primary, then they only can do thirty homes without doing a secondary. And that could be any secondary that's on the transportation plan. It could be Frontage Road, it could be two hundred north. So, we gave a bunch of different, not a bunch, but different options, keeping in mind the, the constraints and the goals.
But that's, but that's part of us talking about the different numbers is that if twelve hundred north, if those individuals told us, ah, we changed our mind, we don't want to have a road, then we have to find a second access from somewhere else and that will be a challenge.
Did we get clarification from State Road on that Frontage Road?
Not yet. No.
That'll be something that we, that we work through with the subdivision process.
All right, well, I'm grateful we had an updated transportation plan because otherwise we would have been looking at the one that was, we said, pulled off the scanner while it was still scanning. And that's what we used to have to look at. So, if we don't have any other discussion, I would entertain a motion.
Well, I move to approve then.
Well, I move to approve the Prime West Annexation Development Agreement.
I'll second the motion.
Alright, all those in fa- wait, is there any other discussion? Alright, you have a motion in a second, all those in favor? Aye.
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 Nay.
Any opposed? You have a nay on record, from Councilman Burton. Alright, so we have four ayes and one nays and the motion carries.
Is that for both items?
The sec- okay. The second item, I was waiting for you to, (laugh) just kidding, there we go. Um, number eleven, the approval of the Prime West Annexation Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash fourteen. Do we have any additional discussion on item eleven? Alright, with that, I would entertain a motion.
Okay, I, I move to approve the Prime West Annexation Ordinance two zero two five dash one four.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor, and we'll start with Councilmember Topham.
Rochelle Topham, aye.
David Harris, aye.
John Dean, aye.
Sharon Downey, aye.
David Burton, nay.
Alright, with a four to one motion, that motion carries as well, a four to one vote.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Sorry, I was trying to pull it up the whole time.
Alright, moving now to our action item number twelve. Thank you, we didn't keep you here all night. Sorry about that. Good night. Um, number eleven, uh, number twelve, discussion and decision on auto renewal of term for Perilone Aviation Nation LC lease. And this is the agreement and FBO for Perilone Airport.
Okay, so, um, if you're a, have a keen eye, have been watching the agendas, you, you may have noticed that we had a, we had an item that was taken off the last agenda, and that was to consider awarding a contract of FBO. Um, we were not ready to do that, plus the, as we looked at it, we realized that we had order of operations a little off. Uh, we do have a current agreement, are part of our current agreement with Perilone Aviation Nation, which is our fix, fixed base operator. I will say FBO from here on out, um, of the city. Um, they had a, they had a five-year agreement, initial term, with automatic extensions automatically that, that kick in for two additional five-year periods. The contract also provided what I have been describing to people as an off-ramp. So the metaphor is if you're on the freeway, you have an off-ramp. Well, well, both the, um, Perilone Aviation Nation and the city can trigger that off-ramp, can choose to get off that exit at five years and at ten years, by providing notice at least ninety days before the, the f- the five-year period is up. Um, so, we are now approaching the end of the, the first five-year term, which is actually January twenty-second. But since we would have to give ninety-day notice, or they would have to give ninety-day notice, then we need to, we need to deal with that before we could consider, um, awarding this to anybody else. We can choose to not take the off-ramp and stay where we're at, let the contract automatically renew. Um, if you've been following Airport Board, you'll know that we, uh, we did put this out to bid. And it's not a bid, but it's a RFP, Request for Proposal. We received, um, three, um, qualifying proposals, one from Aviation Nation and two from other firms. And so, taking this off-ramp would preserve the city's ability to consider all available options moving forward, whether we're selecting and negotiating with one of the new firms or negotiating new terms with Perilone Aviation Nation. So, um, this is a, this is a technicality, um, on contract management. This is not a statement, good or bad, on level of service or anything like that. This is just a, a legal determination. Are we taking the off-ramp and considering new people and/or a re- a renegotiation with Perilone Aviation Nation? Or are we just staying where we're at, letting the auto, um, renew do its thing? So, um, if the council directs staff to exercise the off-ramp, our attorney will provide a ninety-day notice. We would then move forward with evaluating, selecting, and negotiating with one of the firms, um, including Aviation Nation, should they wish to continue. So, that's what we're officially doing on the agenda tonight.
And, uh, if I can add to that, um, and of course, the decision is wholly and completely with the mayor and the council, but in contract construction, and this is an agreement prior to my time, not that you wouldn't have done the same thing, but not a big fan of, in personal service contracts or people that provide those services, like Dan, like myself, who serve at the pleasure of the mayor and the council. And locking, um, a person in or an entity in any fashion for five years with an automatic five-year renewal, with an automatic fiber, uh, isn't, in my opinion, commonplace. This is somebody who's integral to the city and it's more in the nature of, if not at the pleasure of, then year to year or reviewed or, but, um, and so I told Dan, and again, no offense to, I didn't know the parties really, um, as council, uh, my recommendation to him was to take the off-ramp, uh, if we could, and then reevaluate and assess and move forward from there. Uh, hopefully, if that's what happens, not with potential fifteen-year contract. That's, that's my legal opinion.
Thank you for that explanation and counsel. Alright, are there any questions or discussion on this topic? Alright, in that case, um, I would entertain a motion as this is on the action item agenda.
Well, I'm not quite sure how we state it, but-
So ju- you would just make a motion, um, to either not do anything? Or you would make a motion to, um, direct staff to send a ninety-day notice to, to trigger the termination of the existing agreement on the, on January twenty-second? One, one or the other, depending on what motion you wanna make?
Well, I'm sure it's not what he wants to hear, but I do want to make the motion to direct staff to issue the ninety-day notice.
I second it.
Alright, we have a first and a second on this motion. Is there any other additional discussion from any of the council members?
I think it ought to be noted that, like, Dan explained that this just opens it up so we can renegotiate, including Perilone Aviation. I mean, everybody has the opportunity to, you know, negotiate.
I agree with that too, I, you know, I've, I've had government contracts, city go- contracts with my company earlier in life, and I had renew it every two years, um, with the City of Portland and Hill Air Force Base and the National Guard. So I just, you know, RFPs are a good thing for, for everybody and to have a healthy, uh, competition out there.
Alright, if there isn't any other discussion, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Alright, so, did you, did you, okay.
You didn't vote, or you voted no?
I haven't decided. My brain is still turning. Aye. Alright, that motion carries, thank you. Um, we will now move into our, and we, you're here and we do appreciate you, but also I have a folder not related to the agendas for Sydney. I was gonna put it on your chair, but you guys were later and then I didn't wanna run out there. This is for your daughter.
You're up, Addie.
Alright, we're moving into work. And this was brought to my attention multiple times, both in public comment as well as in the community. So we are going to have a discussion with our police chief about the enforcement, police enforcement of key intersections.
Okay.
Okay.
Which key intersections would you like to know about? I, I was briefed by city manager about the complaints that had been coming on social media and by the gentleman here at the mic, about our failure to enforce traffic laws?
I think pretty much we're talking about Main and two hundred south and Main and Center.
Key intersection, yeah.
So which, so-
I think those are, right?
Yes, we're, we're calling, I mean, just to define key intersections, Center and Main, and two hundred, Main and one hundred. But mostly two hundred and Main, Main and Center. Those are the two key intersections we hear the most about.
But I wouldn't go as far as to say that we're, we're, we're trying to accuse a, a problem or, you know, this is a, just a, some intersections that have got some issues, but I don't think- when I say issues, I don't think as far as enforcement, I want that clarified. I don't think there's enforcement issues there.
So, so when U-Doc came and discussed the light with you, Matt talked to me and he said, "I'm gonna kinda throw you under the bus, 'cause it's just what we do, we're gonna put it on that you need more enforcement."
Mm-hmm, and Matt Rhodes is, for anyone who doesn't know, he's the region for, the region for director?
I don't know.
Okay.
He's over U-Doc here, whatever.
And he came to our council meeting when we were talking about en- enhancing intersections.
Right. Um, we're, the reports to me is we have a ton of accidents at Center and Main, and we have a ton of accidents at two hundred south main. Um, we had one, one accident at each of those intersections in the last twelve months. So I don't know that that's a ton of accidents. I think, I think our counselor said it one night, "I'd crash more than that getting out of my driveway." Um, (laugh) we, we enforce, we write tickets, we issue warnings. We have people at those intersections at various times of their shifts. I think that some of what the public that are making comments are seeing or failing to see is it's not... When, before I started my career in policing, I always wondered, I just saw somebody blow a stop sign, why is no one pulling them over? Where are the dang cops? Because that's what cops do, right? They drive around their cars, they look for traffic problems, and they pull cars over. It's not that simple. Um, when I got into law enforcement, I found out how not that simple it was. That's what we call proactive police work, which we do, quite a fair amount of. Um, last year, I'll just kinda bounce back and forth on my notes, but last year, um, are the numbers I'm going with, we made six hundred and twenty-six traffic stops in Perilone.
And that was last-
There were five of us last year.
Yeah.
So, one of us is a school resource officer, so it's actually four point three officers that we had last year, because seventy percent of his time is spent in the schools. And, and the school district pays part of his wages, it's a great partnership, um, and, and we're very lucky to have him. But that doesn't mean he's a fifth officer, or now sixth, that's always out patrolling. Um, there's many things that we have to do in our job. I think some of the public doesn't realize, I think you guys do, because you work around us all the time. Um, I don't, I don't think the public realizes, 'cause I didn't realize, all the things that go into policing besides chasing down speeders and stop sign violators. Um, there's six of us in Perilone. Those six people aren't working at the same time, because there's seven days in the week, there's twenty-four hours in every day. People need family time, they need to take time off, they have, they're, they're only allowed to work a certain amount of hours a week. Um, they have to have weekends, days off. Our number one priority is calls to service. So these are calls that are dispatched to us through Public Safety Dispatch, which are called in, ninety-nine percent of them will be called in by citizens of Perilone. That's our number one priority. Last year, last year, and I'm just going off of last year's numbers, 'cause it's what I had pulled up. I will do a new study first of the year and report that to you. Last year, we had twenty-nine hundred and eleven calls to service. From those calls to service, some of those end up being two or three different incidents that we're investigating. We may go to a domestic violence issue and end up with an assault or, or a DUI, or a drug problem, or child abuse on top of that. So the numbers don't all add up that I would read off. Out of those twenty-nine hundred and eleven though, a thousand and sixty of them are civil neighborhood calls, which are, "My neighbor's not watering on his watering day." Um, juvenile problems, you know, there's kids playing in the street, there's kids riding ATVs around. Um, you know, bin inspections, "My daughter locked her keys in her car, can you come and unlock it for us?" Three hundred and eighty-five medical emergency calls. Hundred and sixty-five crimes against people, those are things like assaults, domestic violence, child abuse, sex crimes, those kinds of things. Two hundred and seventy property crimes, those would be thefts, criminal mischief calls, vandalism, um, trespassing, vehicle crashes. Two hundred and thirty-three documented call-up, follow-up calls, um, which would be, our guys doing extra investigation on open cases they have. Perilone Police Department doesn't have an investigation unit. We are our own investigators. Um, we all take turns patrolling during our shifts to keep coverage, and we all investigate our own cases and help each other. For instance, the, out of the sheriff's department's forty-plus officers, thirty-three of them are patrol officers, and then they have a handful of detectives that do all the investigations that those patrol officers start. Um, like I said, we did six hundred and twenty-six traffic stops, two hundred and sixty-two animal problems, uh, and two hundred and twenty-five agency assists. Those would be things like DF- DCFS needing to go do a home study, um, the DWR needing help with dispatching a deer that's been hit by a car, Highway Patrol needing help on the freeway, they get really overwhelmed. Sometimes we spend a fair amount of time helping our neighboring agencies, fire guys, et cetera, outside agencies. After calls to service, which is our first priority, that's what we just listed, we have to write reports on a fair amount of those calls, mandatory. We have to report on a certain amount of those calls that we take. Um, last year, between the four point three officers we had working, we wrote twelve hundred and twenty-eight police reports, um, which is two hundred and eighty-five per officer, is what that figures out to. Um, if you compare us to other cities, Enic Police Department, um, did a hundred and sixty-two reports per officer. On, guessing because of their numbers and what their staffing was, they, they had twelve hundred and ninety-seven reports and they had eight officers. Uh, the Marshal's Office had eleven hundred-plus reports, they have seven officers, so it's about a hundred and sixty-one for them. Sheriff's Department has thirty-three patrol officers, close, give or take. They had twenty-nine hundred and sixty-five calls, or reports, uh, that was basically ninety per officer. So we write more than our fair share of law enforcement reports. We also have to do reports on any traffic crash that equals over a certain amount of property damage. Uh, we did sixty-one of those, we did eighty-one bin inspections, we did two hundred and thirty-three follow-up calls, like I said.
Addie, Addie, can I interrupt for just a second? Um, by the way, dispatch calls out-
Mm-hmm.
Are, are per officer, on a per- are, are per officer, on a per officer basis, similar to the reports. It's not like our guys are just
These numbers are all
writing a bunch of reports, this is dispatch stuff. When, when I was at the county, we were studying, uh, sheriff levels of service and all of that stuff and what I remember popping off the page to me was Parowan's calls for service on a per officer basis and on a per capita basis were much higher, like significantly higher than other cities around. And these are coming from dispatch. So, I don't know what is about the nature of Parowan, but this is not like these guys are just busy work looking busy.
We have four exits from I fifteen into our jurisdiction and, and stops and, and truck stop. Basically, too, now with the on-the-run, it's, it's kinda turned into a truck stop-ish. Uh, and we have Bryan Head right above us, so that adds to all of our stuff. So, that, I think that's a lot of why Enic's numbers and our numbers are so similar, although they're more than three times our size.
Well, not to mention, we have the freeway running through town, Enic doesn't
Right, they don't have an exit.
respond like we do, they don't have exits and we have two.
Yeah, right, they don't have easy access on, so, uh, that all adds to it, for sure. And I'm just trying to give you a basis of where our time is spent. We're not, I know, I know some of you guys were pretty disheartened and upset that I was getting beat up on, which I was fine, I'm not very thin-skinned at all. Um, it, it's not that we're not, that we're sitting here doing nothing. I wanna show you what we're doing. After, after filing all the reports we're required to file, we have mandatory court appearances on the citations and crashes and citations and arrests that we make. Um, those take time. We can't always plan for, court doesn't schedule things just on our days off, which would suck for us, but would be great for our citizens, cuz then we would always be here working. Um, or we'd be in court on our days off. But sometimes those happen while we're working and so we all have to help each other out when they have court. But it takes time and preparing for court takes time, correct?
I had to read twelve hundred reports, yes.
They're, were they just riveting?
They were.
Uh, we, we help with a lot of the school services. We do some of the programs, Red Ribbon Week and things like that. Whenever our school resource officer is at training or sick or hurt or on a vacation, which he deserves as well, we cover any school issues for him. We, we're involved with planning and drills and things at the school as well. Um, so that takes time. We have required training, we have to keep a minimum of forty hours training a year. Um, along with that, there are certain specialized trainings that we have to also every three years take. Um, th- there's tons of them, I can start listing them. We, we have cer- we have several mental health trainings that we're required to have every three years. Autism Spectrum Disorder, Crisis Intervention, De-escalation. Yearly, we have to have firearms, First Aid CPR, Arrest Control, Defensive Tactics, Legislative Updates. Um, we have to stay current on intoxicilizer and standard field sobriety testing, radar, lidar, less lethal and impact weapons, there, the list just goes on. So, that takes up a certain amount of our time and it's not always on our time off. Then, we get to what everybody here wants, proactive policing, that's traffic stops and sitting and running radar, which we try to fit in during every day of our shift as we can. Like I said, for four point three guys to have made six hundred and twenty-six traffic stops, I think that's pretty good, uh, for last year. We also, on top of that, through our own due diligence, we were able to write and execute eighteen search warrants that led to multiple illegal firearms taken off the streets and quite a fair amount of illegal substance.
How about Paragona, were you planning on talking about the patrols we do to Paragona on daily basis?
Right. Plus, since they're our great neighbors, um, and we love Paragona and we always wanna help them out, whenever there's a call there, we are gunner on, right? Has anybody had a problem with us taking care and helping our, our neighbors? I, I wouldn't have thought. Um, so we contract to work for Paragona so we can recoup some of our costs that it costs us. We don't make much money doing it, but we spend, oh, there, there's probably three hundred calls a year-ish to Paragon area, maybe just under three hundred calls a year, that it, it takes time to do those as well.
And we recently reviewed and renewed that, so it's not something that's just sat there stagnant forever. I know when I got into office, I said, "We need to look at that" and we did.
Right, right, and it's a good relationship, we wanna take care of them. We're gonna go anyway regardless of what's going on, it, it just makes sense to be good partners with them.
It's reciprocal, I mean, in a lot of ways.
Right. Yeah, their fire department helps our fire department all the time.
A good share of the city employees live in Paragona.
Absolutely, right, absolutely, absolutely, we wanna take care of them and we wanna help take care of all our neighbors, for sure. Anyway, what I'm getting to is we try to imbalance what is the most important to our citizens. Obviously, we have some citizens that are disgruntled and don't think that we do enough and so when we get complaints about traffic problems at this area, Center and Main, Holyoke and Main, or in front of the post office, we, we try to, we try to address those issues as those complaints come in, but we have to prioritize everything so that we can handle everything that I've, that I've just been talking about. Um, we ask for help, uh, we, we need the help of our citizens to be able to police right. We, we need complaints when crimes are being seen, we need them in a timely manner. We need when we, when we give somebody a
You mean, you don't just watch Facebook for complaints?
Yeah, yeah, that'd be great, I guess we could get those.
Two years, two days ago, this thing happened, why didn't somebody do something about it?
So, those are the complaints that I'm hearing.
Call.
That, well, a week ago, I had this happen and I was asked to fill out a witness statement, but I didn't cuz that's a waste of my time, they should just be doing their job. Those are the, those are the complaints that do get to me a little bit because they're not a good partner and they're not doing their part to help us out. If we ask for them to write down what they witnessed so we can dig into it and investigate it and they say, "Okay, I'll get it back to you" and they ne- they never do, there's not much we can do with that, there, there's, there's just not a whole lot we can do with. Somebody that just wants to, you know, to gripe. Anyway.
Addie, do you wanna talk about less visible trucks?
Okay, so.
Maybe not, but
Six officers, right? Now, everybody knows, but they, but some don't, it's not. So, two of our trucks are not marked. Um, that doesn't mean that those two trucks are not working and it doesn't mean that those trucks can't stop somebody for a traffic violation. They just don't have markings on them, there's lo- there's many reasons in law enforcement to have unmarked vehicles. Uh, we did a, we served a warrant where ten gun, ten illegal firearms and a, a mushroom, magic mushroom growing operation was seized. Um, several felonies were enforced that day and a, and a, and a good, good solid arrest was made. I was in my personal truck because it blends in sometimes. Uh, well, because mine was in the shop, so that just was what I happened to have. But, every now and then, there are reasons to have an unmarked vehicle. So, two of our vehicles are and, and our new ones will be unmarked vehicles. So, maybe that's a part of it, maybe we're in a neighborhood addressing things or trying to address things or patrolling and nobody realizes it's us, so they're saying they've never seen a police ring, that's possible. Um, we don't, we don't activate our lights every time we do something. We, we run lights when we're trying to pull somebody over or when we're trying to get through traffic for a very high priority incident like a crash with injuries or something that's endangering the public. The reason we don't always activate our lights is it causes danger to the public every time we do. I have a very, very good friend who lost a big part of his family to a crash that involved an officer running high speed to a traffic accident and it didn't need to have been. Uh, I mean, I mean, his sister and fam- their family should be still alive with us. So, we're very conscious of not overstepping and abusing that power of the lights and sirens. So, maybe you don't hear us going to every call, maybe you don't see every traffic stop, maybe, maybe the people that ran stop signs all afternoon wasn't when you weren't at work or were off, were, were at work or maybe you didn't look out your window at the right time. I mean, we're just gonna have complaints and that's how it is. The studies that we're doing and the actions that we're seeing, these problem intersections that are being talked about, Holyoke and Main is always gonna be a kind of a problem intersection. There are always gonna be people that roll through stop signs. It's very easy to do, done it myself more than fifteen times. I'm sure everyone else in here has too. Uh, it happens, it's not, it's not gonna be stopped and cured. The Main Street and Center Street intersection, the same thing. The complaints that we had, uh, s- sitting at this microphone, um, the, the one accident that happened last year, I handled the accident. I was the one that investigated and handled it, the person that was complaining about it caused the accident because they didn't stop and didn't yield to through traffic. Um, the complaint on their side was that there should be a four-way stop because she didn't have time to get across the road before it, the other car hit her. Well, then you shouldn't have gone. If, if, if I'm wrong, tell me I'm wrong, but you, you shouldn't pull out into Main Street unless you could clearly can see that you don't, that you have room and you have time. Um, but there's no other way to look at it, I've, I've investigated crashes for fifteen years plus and it, when, when you cause a crash, you cause the crash.
So, Addie, I, I know that sometimes somebody will, will call in and say, "I have a concern" about either somebody in specific, "Can I request additional patrol?" Or somebody says, "People are flying past my house and I live on X Street." And you guys do send extra patrols, as you're driving, you make sure you hit that area. What can be done, given, given the fact that we typically have one patrol officer on at a time? You do all the math, you, if you, I don't know if everybody's doing all that math in their head and figuring out how many things on average they're gonna do in a day. So, of the time that they are out act- doing active policing, patrolling, um, and by the way, if, if people think it's bad here, um, Cedar City is the one that has maybe more calls than we do on a per capita basis?
Oh, by far.
Basis, they run from call to call to call to call. You rarely see them pulling people over because they're literally running from call to call.
They actually have, I believe, two now, specific traffic units that that's all they do is traffic.
Because otherwise, they would just be running to patrol.
Because the other officer, we always, when I was at Cedar, we always had goals set, everybody try to make two stops on your shift, which isn't very many, correct? Like, compared to, we have six guys working, that's, that's a dozen stops for the night. That would be fantastic, but there wasn't time. We could very rarely get those goals made to where we'd get those two stops made because we would be called to a CPR in progress, to a weapons offense, to a domestic, to a child abuse.
So, we're not, we're not quite to that level?
No.
But, but we are busy.
But, but we're, we're busy.
But, so what can be done, given the resources we have? Maybe you can talk about the UHP program where we bring them in on, on certain times?
And, and we do that now and then, um, now and then we'll partner up with them. They'll, 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 they're very gracious, they'll offer to help us out and do a DUI blitz or something like that, usually around key times because they're overwhelmed too, they're, they're, obviously, they're a huge agency, but they're more than busy as well. But they're willing to help, they, um, we had a DUI last night, it was on one forty-three, so technically was their jurisdiction. Um, they were, the, the trooper that was on was very gracious and he came and he helped Officer Blake so that he could concentrate on a bigger part of the city for the night than just that incident. And I have the insurance information and everything for you.
We'll, we'll talk about that later, damage to the symmetry fence.
Well, I'll, I mean, I wanted to just add, I, I was kinda calculating in COVID years and I was like, I don't wanna say exact years, in recent years, in my household, we've had four tickets and three warnings that I know of, but I'm sure there have been more warnings that I didn't hear about. But, for our household to have four tickets with significant fines and three warnings, I'm like...
So, what, what do we think, do we think her family are just
I feel like we're a regular sampling in the community, we have people out doing things and I'm like, you know...
Mayor, are you gonna rat on yourself or are you gonna leave it generic?
I'm leaving it generic, but I'm just saying, I mean, that ha- it has not been my experience that tickets aren't being written and it has not been my expe- experience that warnings aren't being written. So, that's not my experience, but other people tell me that. But then, also, I've talked to you about this, I mean, I get calls, someone, my neighbor's cat keeps walking on my yard and I've said, "How many calls do you get like this?" And you're like, "We get calls like this all the time." So, after you finish answering that question...
Two thousand nine hundred and eleven of them.
Um, I would say
Of all kinds of calls.
These are ways you can help, is you cannot make calls like my neighbor's cat is walking onto my lawn again. So, I mean, there are things that as a community, we can do to help support law enforcement.
I, I had, I had about a one-month period where I spent a minimum of thirty hours of my time a- away from other work because of a complaint that dust was blowing
Yeah, I remember.
from the wind, so you're, you're all involved and, and you know what that wa- I mean, is that what we call nine-one-one for? The wind's blowing and it's making dust?
And these are nine-one-one calls?
I'm, I, I just have to opine, I'm old and so, what, forty-four years now and in Washington DC and with the National District Attorney's and Iron County. I've seen a lot of police departments and sheriff's offices and, and sometimes we, you know, I find it a blessing that we are here in America, in a beautiful town, you know, talking about the level of tickets or somebody speeding in a pecul- particular area of town. We have no idea how, and things aren't always measured by numbers, it's character and it's people. We have really good people, we have a great police chief, um, he's
Well, obviously.
Well, you do, we do, he's, he's highly respected and, um, I took great interest in, and, and took to heart the complaints of this gentleman when he made them and, and I just thought, you know, this was an issue that I've been involved in, that the mayor's been involved in and worked on, that Dan's worked on, I think the mayor took more meetings than I did. It is a problem that, um, the city doesn't control and those are the worst kinds of problems when you wanna fix something, but you have no control over it. Uh, a contract between a private person who lives in Nevada and the United States Postal Service. And we made calls to all relevant parties, trying to move the post office to a place where maybe a post office should be. But, when things are grandfathered in and you have, you know, something in a place in a, in a beautiful town that it shouldn't be and there's more traffic and we think, you know, there should be no traffic in a quiet neighborhood. Um, but it's not for lack of trying and effort, we looked at a couple of locations and, and then it's too close to the liquor store, it's gotta be so many feet from the school or it'd have to meet certain parameters. But, uh, I guess the point I'm making, perhaps too verbose, is that we have a really engaged police department from, you know, your office staff to every single officer and, and engaged with the mayor and the city manager and, and so, you know, whatever problem it is, you know him, he'll work through it.
My door's open and
He'll tell you what he thinks.
I, I don't know if, have any of you ever had trouble getting ahold of me?
Well, in any meeting, anyone's called the school or anywhere, I, I am like, "Are you available?" And you make yourself available, I mean...
I have, I have people, I have people come up and just knock on the door and say, "Can I talk to you?" And I just take, whenever I can work it in, I, my door's open, I'm a pretty open book. And if you have a, if you have a solution, I'm, I'm all ears.
So, that's what I was just gonna say. It, nothing more drives me crazy. Like, yes, you're gonna complain, yes, we're gonna get whatever, but come with a solution. Like, if you do have a really good idea, we're all ears, but I've, I've...
Well, or even if I have the com, I have a complaint brought to me and I give them a witness statement and say, "Will you please write this up for me so I have a starting place and I can address this?" It's not my job. I'm not gonna do your paperwork for you is what I'm told a lot of the time. So, well, it must not be as big a complaint as you once thought it was then, if you're not willing to write it. I, I get being anonymous. I get people don't wanna be in the middle of a fight, that's fine. I'm happy to fight anybody for anybody here, but I gotta have a little bit of help. I can't just, there, there are certain, there are certain ways I can take enforcement. I can either have a judge issue a warrant for me to go and take enforcement against somebody, or I can witness it myself or develop, or at least enough corroboration so I can develop probable cause to go address the situation. That's all I'm asking for. If somebody isn't willing enough to be a witness so that they can at least give me a starting place and something to go off of, then it's pretty hard for me to take it to the next step.
So, so back to the traffic, I gotta point out something. Um, first of all, if you, if you go to school and you get a, you get a blue shirt and a badge, you're gonna be criticized no matter what you do. And as a city council and as a city, we are gonna be criticized with policy, with enforcement, with budget, no matter what we do. Let's say we add an officer, which by the way, we're talking real money to add an officer, or, or you guys say you mandate, which you can't mandate quotas, but we want you to just spend every spare second at this specific intersection issuing citations. Or we work with UHP and we say, "Okay, we're gonna do a blitz through this area for a month." We all know who's gonna get tickets and, and then these same guys are gonna get a lot of crap from our citizens saying, "What are you doing giving me a ticket? I want you to give the Brianhead guy a ticket, the guy that I can smell weed coming out of his car." Tickets get given to whoever gets blowing through the stop signs or rolling the stop signs, to the mayor's point about her family. Um, if we do this, if we find something, if they even focus on an area, then, then the next thing, the next complaints that come in are, "What are you doing giving locals tickets?" That's not how it works, like anyways. I'm just pointing out that it's a, it's a no-win situation a lot of times. They do the best they can. They try to be fair, they try to be, if somebody really deserves a ticket, they give the ticket and if they were, it was an honest mistake, you know, let's give them a warning or whatnot. But more enforcement means more pushback and people coming to the council and coming to the city council and being like, "What's up with that officer? He's, he's just, he's rude to me, the complaints come to me, they go to post, post calls and they say, 'You got an officer that's being heavy-handed.'" It is what it is. I'm just saying, there is a flip side to this coin if we really wanna step on the gas with enforcement, assuming we can come up with the resources to do it. And it, it's just something for everybody to think through. Um, obviously, um, you know, we, if there's an area and we can try to focus on it, but...
Yeah, if you, if you want a traffic unit, I, I mean, let's budget for it and let's get a traffic officer. If you want, if you wanna up the, up the penalties on code enforcement and animal problems, let's get the resources in place and let's get an officer that we can have that be his priority. But we have to, ultimately, I have to plan for my department how to handle all of the other stuff I read to you first.
Councilmember Downey keeps trying to, to get a spot, to get the talking feather. Go on, you had something to say.
What doesn't, what doesn't help is the state will not help us put any kind of signage up or anything, or even the, the crosswalks that we wanted to, where it'll highlight that you gotta stop ahead.
So, they will...
Cause we don't have, cause we don't have the, the traffic.
If you wanna put a sign line item in my budget, I can fill all, all to make signs, but...
But we can't, we can't do it on the state road though, can we?
Right.
Yeah.
Well, we can do it on city streets.
But, okay, but the city streets, but Main Street and two hundred is state. So, we can't even do that intersection. Center Street is that state?
Yes.
So, you can't even do that one.
Going up the canyon, nonetheless.
Yeah, yeah.
And hon, and to be honest, I have, I have spent hours and hours at both intersections. I've made hundreds of traffic stops over the last several years at both intersections. The amount of problems that we're seeing there are not the same as what is being reported. What's being complained about is an, is an inflated amount of, "Well, I saw something, so it must have happened fifty times because I saw something and I was almost in a near miss."
Is that on both intersections?
I, I get, yes, I get people run stop signs and I get people don't obey. And I get that people sometimes don't realize what that, that big red sign with the flashing lights around the outside of it, that it says, "Stop," that that means their lane too. They just think it's the one to the right of them. That's a not, that's an absolute common complaint about the two hundred south Main going, heading east. The, that flashing stop sign only means for the right lane. We have people tell us that all the time. I literally, just a cou, just a few weeks ago, well, right before I went under the back surgeon, I had a driver tell me, "I heard that if you're at a stop sign, but you can tell nobody's coming, you can treat it like a yield sign and that's legal."
Mm-hmm.
And that's a literal word for word, I was told that. And I, I thought that was a pretty great excuse, right? I mean, he was completely honest with me. Oh, I'd spend a little while educating him and give him a warning and every, I bet you, he stops at that stop sign now when nobody's coming, sometimes. Sometimes he won't. People are too busy on their phones, they're, they're, they're not paying attention, but... What's that? It is a ticket, but, but now I have to prove that they were on their phone not doing navigation things. So, how, so how do I, so how do I prove that they're not just trying to read their navigation? But yes, we write that ticket though, but we write that ticket, we do. I don't report to everybody which tickets I write. I don't come to your house and say, "Hey, I, you have a neighbor that I wrote a ticket to, you should know that because this constitution that we follow says you have to be private. We deserve our privacy." If I did something stupid and blew a stop sign, got a ticket, I wouldn't want everybody, wouldn't wanna have to wear a scarlet stop sign on my forehead so that everybody could see, you know what I mean? Like, there has to be common sense, that, like, we're not, not everybody is gonna know everything we do. Sometimes the things that we think is not happening is most certainly happening, you're just not hearing about it. Yes, absolutely.
Sure.
So, there's this thing that we're talking about, the intersections where there, there were pedestrian near misses or traffic near misses. That was brought to the council by the council. I mean, they brought it and put it on the agenda. And it was Matt Rhodes who said enforcement can fix this.
So, Matt talked to me outside first, into my office and said, "I'm gonna put this all on you because I have no fix for it. I know you have very limited resources, but technically if you had an officer there when that near miss happened, you could've given that guy a ticket." Absolutely, we could have. We have, we have one guy at a time working, most of the time. It's a big city, Paragon is involved with us as well, and there's all the things that I just went through. So, not every violation is gonna be seen by one of my guys. Or, and you know, it's, it's just common, it's just how it is. I wish we could...
Technically speaking, if you had an officer outside of their home, you wouldn't have a lot of the issues that you do. They have to help us. The state has to. Cause they do give, there are cars, I've been there where I've had to slow down so I don't get hit. And it's more often than not, and it's usually the ones that are going up to Brianhead.
You know, I've noticed a UHP officer out on Holyoke, down by KB, two or three out of the last four evenings.
Yes.
They must be...
Many times. We have several UHP officers that live in our area and they're passionate about taking care of our area.
They must be bumping up patrols on two hundreds is what I'm saying.
Well, I've heard...
They have their discretion, just like everybody else does and they can, they'll tell them where they want them to try to, like, when you give, when you let me know that, or when you let me know that there's an intersection and we need to be watching it, we try to bump things up. They do the same thing. But ultimately, when they're not doing that, their officers can go where they want in the state. They're the state police, right? They're the highway patrol. Um, we have, it's here.
And we, we are enha- enhancing crosswalks. Did you, cause this is appropriate for this topic, did you wanna talk about enhancing crosswalks? Well, that's exactly what I was gonna say because, yes, we did bring that to the council. The council brought that. So, what we're currently doing and we're getting ready to implement it as soon as we get all the working pieces, but basically from the school, and I, I'll just say, I'm crappy with directions. So, starting at the high school crosswalk and going to Chevron, at each...
That's going south for a shell.
Thank you very much. No, I really, like, I suck at directions.
I can follow those directions easy.
So, like, starting at that crosswalk from the high school over, on all of those little streets that are on our side of it...
That we can do something.
That we can do something about, it's going to say Ram Crossing and so we're doing, it'll say Ram and then with the logo of the Ram painted there and then Crossing and it's gonna do it all the way up to the Chevron. And then hopefully that will also stand out on the center, the one that we're having the issues right, where the library is as well. And it'll, and also with signs from the Peril and Prevention Coalition are doing yellow signs that say Ram Crossing and stuff like that, that will stand out.
So, Rochelle, can we do it on the east side of, of Center Street?
Only on, no, because it's, they are, it's the state road.
No.
That's the state road.
It's the state road. However, we can do it like right here, on this side where the mortuary is to the gym.
Right.
We are going to do it on that side and then on, around the school as well. There are certain spots on crosswalks that we will do as well.
We've identified what, like fifteen intersections that we want and, and, and...
Yeah.
And we need it.
UDOT will allow us to enhance the intersections that they're in control of, but not the way we want to enhancement within a very specific...
Which is still with writing them up, getting new paint, writing them up.
We're gonna, we're gonna make those better, but it'll be UDOT okayed.
They, so it's called ladder crosswalks or zebra and you guys will know the difference. The ladder, maybe go to where there is one, Dan. Um, where the ladder crosswalks are, I think there's one by the high school. Um, so, go down again toward, um...
Oh, yeah, we have a ladder crosswalk.
So, they will allow us to do those enhancements to their crosswalks. They don't have the budget to do it, but we can do it. They're gonna, going to, that's why we engaged Matt Rhodes is if we do it, is can we do it? So, all of those crosswalks that we've been talking about are the UDOT ride of ways, they are going to allow us to do the enhancements. So, we'll be able to enhance those three with the ladders and then on the other side will be the Ram Crossing. And then the same thing down at Center, I mean, at Main and two hundred, we'll be able to do a ladder across, so visibly the people will see that ladder and then they'll also see the Ram Crossing. So, there are opportunities, I think vis- visually for people to know they need to be on higher alert. And then UDOT said, once we put those in, they can maintain them, but they just don't have the budget to put them in and we wanna get them put in.
We're putting a ladder crossing here at two hundred. Hopefully that will stop the, the occasional blow through that stop sign.
What you're gonna find is that some people are gonna see them and it's gonna really help and some people are still gonna run it.
None of it's gonna be a hundred percent.
This is the real world and I don't care what city or country you go to, you're gonna have people run stop signs and you're, but, but to make it as visible as we can is definitely gonna help.
And, and obviously, um, local people know the intersections and they know they need to stop. It, we do have, I think, people running the intersection when that happens and, and I will call anybody a liar that says when they are visiting or vacationing somewhere, haven't accidentally done something because they're trying to navigate and figure out where they're going. It does happen, so the more visible you can make something, and that's the goal, is that even those that are traveling through, they don't understand Center and Main. I, I think that's half the problem here is that people don't understand that.
They don't know even what they're supposed to be doing.
Will everybody stop something, make street footers stop a sign?
They stop when they're not supposed to stop.
Mm-hmm.
Or...
We see some of that, but you're, you're exactly right. It's people visiting, it's happened to me when I've been in California or somewhere. I, I'm not as good a California driver as I am a rural Utah driver.
Bob, did you hear something?
But, that's just how life is and you're gonna have it. We're a tourist town and, I mean, that's what we're catering to, right?
I was just gonna make a comment on the ladder crosswalk versus parallel lines. I read it correctly, if I'm wrong. When it's layered like that with paint, we need to wait for the driver, you wait till they can move across the street. Whereas just the parallel lines, once they pass that lane, you're, you're welcome to go. That's what I saw legally. If it's lined, you wait till they're, wait till they cross the street.
So, I would have, I would have to look it up. I'm not, I don't, I don't know a hundred percent.
So, if you do those ladders all along, educate...
I know, I know in the school stop...
That's great.
At a school stop, you have to wait till the crosswalk is clear. Anywhere else, it's basically the seventy-five...
And it's important that they do. I mean, people drop stuff and come back. You've got people with, you know, strollers and dogs and all kinds of things going on. But the point I, I mean, I'm glad we had this full conversation, we probably need to move on, but, um, with the ladder crosswalks, anything that enhances, I talked to public works directors and different roadway people around in areas where there are a lot of pedestrians. Um, Springdale was one that gave me some great input and they just said, "Everything you do helps, so just do more." And I was like, "Okay." And that's why we brought it to council is I said, "This is one of those we keep talking about, let's do it." And now we've got great momentum and it's gonna happen and we are grateful for the Prevention Coalition being willing to add to the project to help the kids. And then even our public works director said, "Also do signals that say, 'Look up' as they check off, step off the curb." He's like, "I saw those when we traveled last weekend." And he said, "When you step off the curb, if you see that, they look up." Cause a lot of people really do cross the roads looking at their phones. I know that sounds shocking, but I watch it all day long. I, I take little videos sometimes, cause I'm like, this is...
That's probably most of the near misses on the walkers.
Mm-hmm.
Or they're just figuring, "Well, it's a crosswalk, everybody's gonna stop for me." You still have the responsibility to make sure that oncoming traffic sees you or is stopping for you.
Mm-hmm.
You might win in a lawsuit, but you're gonna be squashed.
Yeah.
So, there needs to be some common sense.
But thanks for that, cause we need to research that and then if that does become a law because of those markings, we need to educate. Because I agree, I see people just waiting for the kids to, or whoever, it could be anybody, I mean, this is often dog walkers and they just go right behind them. And I'm like, you could easily have them kinda turn back around or stumble or the dog do something, you know, and you'd hit them. So, great conversation, great discussion. Really appreciate you bringing us those numbers. It makes me understand so much more about what you do.
Yeah, thank you.
Hey, Chief.
Yes, sir.
What does VIN, main?
Sorry, vehicle identification number. If you buy a vehicle from a private seller, um, you may come across one that doesn't have a title or you're just doing a bill of sale, or that it might have come from out of state. The DMV, Division of Motor Vehicles, requires a vehicle identification number inspection to be done and the DMV has stopped offering that service, so...
Well, I get the VIN number...
Our officers have to go and do it. So, what we do is we come out, we look at your paperwork and we match that to the vehicle identification number on the car, four-wheeler, boat, wha- whatever it may be, motorcycle. And then we check them and make sure it's not listed as stolen anywhere at the time.
You just do that randomly or...
All the time. Yeah, about, well, eighty-one last year.
The DMV has basically shifted this onto law enforcement?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, car, car dealers can do it too. Will she still do it?
But, but sometimes she can't, she doesn't have the time or, or the staffing and we're happy to do them too, but...
That's, we've got definitely someone who knows in the room.
Car, car dealers can also do a VIN inspection.
And, and it's, it's vehicle, you go to Cedar and they're gonna say if...
For the record, we don't have any in town?
They don't leave their desks. Sure, absolutely.
Alright, thank you.
So, Dan, on those crosswalks, when you do it on state road, does it, do they require special paint or they have...
It all has to be to their spec.
It'd be the no slip and have to be the...
So, what you do on city is you're gonna do different.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, yep.
The state won't allow that, right? The decal and all that.
Right.
They will not. They won't let us do the logo, but they'll let us do the enhancement.
Find out for the danger then help.
They turned us down.
They won't allow a different color... They won't allow a different color or anything.
Yeah, we can just do the, the standard, which is fine. It'll be good. It'll make a difference. Thank you.
Does anybody beat up on you anymore? Are you good?
No, just thank you.
Thanks for all you do.
Yes, thank you for everything you do. I appreciate you. I appreciate your officers. Whenever I call you, you're, you answer every single time. I don't know, I ca- just can't thank you enough for everything that you guys do. And I'm sorry that-
That's all you want, too. It's just-
People are not nice, but, alright, thank you. Alright, moving to the next item, and it is the discussion on the short-term rental fee, oh, I'm sorry, did I skip one? No, discuss, number fourteen, discussion on planning commission's recommendation of short-term rental code. There were enough discussion and changes that we brought it back.
No, this is the, the, and it's easy to get them all confused. This one is the first time we're hearing this.
Okay, so the other one is which one that we're gonna bring back to the council because we made some substantive changes?
We're bringing back open space. We're bringing back procurement.
Okay.
So this is the fun part of the meeting.
Our first run of this one.
This is the fun part of the meeting. Um, by the way, for those that are worried, this is a four-slide thing. This is the summary of the code. This, this, um, I did this presentation for, um, in planning commission. Um, since this is, this is not being modified, this is new, this is a new thing. So, you have had a copy of, of the, the code that was recommended by, by planning commission, and this is now the, just a summary of what is in there. Bullet pointed summary. So, the purpose of this code is to allow, when I say STR, it's short-term rental. These are otherwise known as verbos. They're known as Airbnbs and other things. Um, to allow them, that's the purpose, while preserving the rural character and housing supply. Those are two very important things. We've talked about that a lot recently. Um, promotes, the code promotes responsible ownership and accountability. Areas or zones where these are allowed after, assuming you have a license, is A1, R1, R1A, R2, R3, general commercial, downtown commercial, which we don't have any zone downtown commercial, um, properties yet, but it is a new zone, and it is allowed there. Zones that is prohibited, uh, highway service and industrial manufacturing zones. It also, also not permitted to do a short-term rental in mobile homes, RVs, tents, or other temporary dwellings. Licensing and registration, STRs must have a heroin city business license. Put a pin in the word business there, because we, we may decide how we want to apply that, um, when we talk fees here in a minute. Um, but regardless, that license will be renewed annually, like a business license. They must register for state and local transient room tax accounts, sales tax, all of those things that are required by state code. Um, licenses are non-transferable and can be revoked for violations. So, in other words, if somebody is operating one and they sell the property, the new property owner has to come in and get a license. And, um, and if a, if an irresponsible owner is violating this code, there's a, there's a series of ramp-up, um, fees, and then they can eventually have their license revoked. Um, operational rules, um, we have a good neighbor policy, and that policy must be posted inside the short-term rental. That's very critical, because that, that's how you're affect, that's how you're telescoping what our expectations are to the guest that's staying there overnight, because otherwise the guest comes and the guest goes, the guest is, is horrible, or doesn't recognize the impact that they're making on a community around them. So that's why that's required to be posted in the STR. They must require local contact person available to respond to issues within sixty minutes. By the way, this short-term rental code was a, an amalg- amalgamation, I don't know if I used the right word, um, of a lot of cities that have, that have dealt with, um, the ups and downs of these over the years. Um, we were given legal advice from a prior council to stay away from doing short-term rental code. At the time, it was kind of a legal minefield. Since then, um, things have pretty much worked their way through, and now there's a lot of good. Not only, um, heavy, heavily litigated and litigation-proof concepts, but really workable concepts that work. The idea is not to be punitive, or to punish, or to discourage short-term rentals. The idea is that they fit well in the community, um, with, with good, with good boundaries, good rules, so that they are success, not a constant source of friction with the city or the neighbors, right? Anyways, I digress. Um, local contact person, um, a lot of times there's calls, the law enforcement or somebody needs to get ahold of somebody who, who can respond. Uh, trash must be properly managed to avoid overflow occupancy. Uh, planning commission had a pretty healthy discussion about occupancy, and this is where we ended up. One guest per a hundred and fifty square foot of living space. And that, of course, the bigger the, 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 um, place, the more guests they can have for this ordinance. We discussed a lot of different ways of doing it, and that's where the planning commission ended up. Parking, two additional off-street parking spaces as a minimum for every short-term rental. And then, after you get beyond eight guests, you have to add another parking spot for every four guests. So, translation, if you had a nine-guest home, and that's what, what's advertised, it's what the, the STR sleeps, you would need three off-street parking spaces for nine. Then once you hit thirteen, you'd need four, right? Signage, um, they're allowed to have a maximum two-square-foot discre- discreet sign. We don't want a massive sign. Usually these are in neighborhoods, they're in, they're in condos, they're, they are, um, they're just, it's just housing. Um, we're not treating them like businesses. Once we implement this code, we're treating them like short-term rentals. We're no longer trying to shoehorn them into something else. And we've been shoehorning them into a, um, at-home business, because we didn't have anything, and we needed to have some way to make sure they were, they were doing taxes. When we did our TRT code, that's how we shoehorned them in. Where now we're just gonna treat them like rentals, but we don't want them acting like businesses with a business impact on neighborhoods, because they're almost always in neighborhoods, right? That's the nature of them, right? Okay, noise, no outdoor amplified sound outside of ten, no, yeah, outside of ten PM and before seven AM. Which is, by the way, our noise ordinance, but we want it explicitly put in the code. And no unapproved parties or events. We talked a lot about that with the planning commission. We can talk about it again with you guys if you want. I think most of you watched that. Um, limits of quantity of STRs. Now, this is a saturation limit citywide. We explored like four or five different options, not with the intent to do all of them, just to figure out what, what was the best thing that the planning commission wanted to do. They settled essentially on one plus this HOA caveat. So, the, the limit on quantity is a citywide cap, no more than ten percent housing, of total housing units in the city can be short-term rentals. Um, put a pin in that, because I want to come back and talk about the city council's role when we hit the ten percent cap.
Yeah.
Um, HOA approval, um, if, see normally we stay out of CCRs. We do not enforce them. It is not the city's role. It is a civic matter. Um, however, this would be dipping our toe a little bit into CCRs. Basically, what we would say, if somebody comes in for an application, we would know the subdivisions that have active CCRs that prohibit it. And we would honor the CCR's prohibition of short-term rentals and not provide a permit. So if we know that the GUR subdivision has an active HOA, and they have CCRs that prohibit it, we're, the city's not gonna permit one in there. So that little piece of the code just says that we will, we will help the HOA by not issuing a permit. It's like when we had the short, when we had the storage code, the storage container code that was very, very, very restrictive. It drove me nuts that the storage container companies would just slam a container in, knowing that it was not permitted in the city or they needed a permit. So, it always frustrated me that they didn't do us a solid and at least tell the people, "Hey, by the way, this might not be allowed." They would just put it in. So that's us doing a solid for the HOAs, saying, "Yeah, if, if you want to prohibit it, we will also prohibit it." Inspections, uh, safety inspection required before license and every two years thereafter. This is primarily a fire inspection. Um, we, and we have a, we have a checklist. It'll be an administrative thing. Um, I, I will go through the checklist, um, with the council when the time comes, if you'd like, but we're not gonna codify the checklist, because it may change over time. But the, the summary is, they must have smoke detectors, fire extinguishers, exit routes, and other safety items. Pretty sure they probably have to have CO2 stuff. They have to have modes of ingress, egress. You can't put two people in a closet with a bed and call that a bedroom. They have to be able to, just like, just like normal code. The thing is, is people get really creative trying to make their short-term rental be, have more housing, and sometimes they then get into unsafe stuff. So, this is a, is a key thing to make sure that we're not gonna have a house burned down and three people burned in it, because they've never slept in that house that night, and they, it wasn't a safe property. So that's the reason for the inspections, and every two years is another inspection. We'll come back to that with fees. Grandfathering, any short-term rentals that are in existence today that have a license with the city before our code passes. So if this code looks like it's gonna pass, and if I own one of these and I don't have a license, I would hurry and get a license with the city. Um, those will all be grandfathered, but they still have to follow the code, right? The grandfathering does not mean you get to not follow the code. It just means you're for sure permitted. Um, short-term rentals without licenses, they're gonna have to apply to get a license, and they're gonna have to meet the code, right? We just wanted to make sure people weren't freaked out about their existing units. Enforcement, this is if they have received fines, they're violating something with the code. Um, first fine, two hundred and fifty, second, five hundred, third, a thousand. Two violations in twelve months may tr- may, doesn't, shall, it may trigger license revocation, review, right? Obviously, we're gonna, we're gonna look at the, 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 the typical offenders, those that never respond. We have complaints. It's a party house. We try and get ahold of somebody. We can't get ahold of somebody. The neighbors are complaining because they're parking buses. Our attorney talked about that last time. And they're blocking people's driveways, and we're like, "Guys, you're, you're, you gotta work with us here. They're not doing anything, not doing anything. We fine them." Not doing anything, we fine them again, and then we say, "Alright, we're gonna revoke your license unless you can do something." So, we're gonna be reasonable, but we gotta have some teeth. If there isn't any teeth in the code, there's nothing to enforce, right? City may use monitoring services per state law. Monitoring services means translation. The city can go to Airbnb dot com and say, "You have a, a home or a STR listed, and you don't have a license. We went by and checked, and sure enough, you were renting this thing out. Therefore, you need to get a license." Monitoring services means just that. We are able to look online and see that they have this. They also have software that is available online that'll tell you all of the listed properties in your city. We can scrub that against our list and say, "Looks like we have a couple that we need to reach out to." Um, this was not technically legal until a law passed last year in the state government that says we can look online and use it as evidence. So, this just says that we can do it. And I think we have to have it in our code. I can't remember, but we decided to put it in regardless.
And we also, and we moved the word "may" to "we should."
On what?
Where it says, "City may use monitoring services." We, we should, we should, we'll use, we should use it.
Well, when you're writing code, you, you rarely want to use the word "should." You'll usually say "may," and, and, and it's expected that we will. But you usually either use the word "may" or "shall." Those are your two choices. But if we said "shall," it means by law, I have to do that as administration. And if I'm not doing that now, I'm violating the code, and, but "may," then the council can say, "Dan, you and your staff do this. We want to see you do this." So "may" is like, we want to preserve the city's option.
Then just one question more.
Yeah.
Um, are we, um, receiving TRT taxes for short-term rentals?
Yeah.
Okay. For some reason, I thought-
We, and by the way, i- i- if, if I'm a short-term rental out there and I'm, I'm flying under the radar. By the way, Airbnb, uh, the, the big sites already, um, automatically collect it and remit it. That's the beauty of what they do. But if you're doing a short-term rental and you're not with any of the, the big sites, you're still responsible to do it yourself. We do get an outlet report from the state that lets us know who is remitting and who isn't. And, and every once in a while, we'll do an audit. Um, we're, we're right now working through a sales tax audit to make sure that the outlets are. And, and here's the thing, it's not even necessarily that somebody is on purpose not reporting. They may have the wrong address, the wrong city code, and, and their, their money is going to Bryanhead, or it's going to the county, or it's going to Cedar City, just because they put, they didn't put the, the address, the physical address code correct. So we'll do an audit just to make sure we're getting our fair amount of tax.
So with a question, with that TRT, are we gonna go over like this, like the code? Because I've got a question, just like on some wording.
Yeah, yeah, we can definitely do that. This is, this is my last bullet point, and then we can take it any direction you want to take it. Um, appeals, denials and revocations can be appealed to the planning commission within thirty days. So if we, if we, if we revoke something, they want to appeal it, we, we wanted to give them, um, a, a, an outlet there, so.
Yeah, fire away. I'll pull up the actual code.
Okay, well, I just had a question, like, in the definition part, and it's like, number one definition. Though, when I read it, it just makes it, it just sounds, I don't know. So, definition number one. So, short-term rental, a permanent dwelling or portion thereof rented for less than thirty consecutive days. So, they can stay thirty days, or?
Rented for, so this is, this is the concept of transient? It, we, we could almost get into the same transient language?
Just because, like, to qualify for TRT, it's twenty-nine days or less. So to me, it's almost like you can rent this for thirty consecutive days.
Less than. So that's twenty-
I know, that's where I'm getting-
It means the exact same thing mathematically, but if you would rather say twenty-nine days or less, we can put that.
I want, I would rather it say that. I don't know, are you guys-
Nobody has a beef with that, right?
You guys feel that way? I don't know. When I just read it, I read it over and over, and maybe-
Logically, they both mean the same thing.
I don't think it matters.
Nope, doesn't matter.
I don't think it matters that we can do it.
It doesn't matter?
But, put it in. It doesn't matter.
Oh, we're good. We can put it in.
I just, I don't know. My husband says I overthink things, and obviously it's- Yes, twenty-nine days or less.
Wait, but, but hang on. The nice thing about the way it was is it said consecutive. So we can say twenty-nine consecutive days.
If you guys feel like the way it was before is fine, I'm fine with that.
Well, it accomplishes the same thing.
It's fine.
I don't know. I think it was just the number thirty. I don't know. Sorry if I-
Well, we get to interpret that as we're enforcing it, and this is, this concept is not very vague. It's, it's the, it's essentially the definition of transient room.
Bob is raising his hand, and I feel he is a bit of an expert on these, so I don't know if you have input on the twenty-nine days?
You just have to be careful, because it says twenty-nine consecutive days. I could have twenty different renters and go beyond the thirty days, forty days of consecutive days, but it should be like that reservation. It's, it's not-
Oh, I see what you're saying.
If it's over thirty days, it's, it's a long-term rental, but by the same lease.
By the same person.
I could have, in Bryanhead, I ha- I could have thirty-two days consecutive on a calendar.
But there's-
That's ten different reservations.
Well, I just added the phrase "by the same renter."
That, that would be more correct to collect the TRT tax.
Yes, and, no, that's a good point.
Come up. Should it say same renter or same party? I don't know, because I know on the agreement, you have people coming and going, but you've got the person who's signed to the document.
I would say renter.
Okay.
Since rent is the verb of choice, we're already using.
I have two things. One, um, farther, if you scroll down a little bit, where you talk about, um, allowable or unallowable, or allowed or not allowed.
Zones.
So in your summary, it didn't talk about rural estates, and we talked about that.
Oh, that's one of the things that I-
Caught it.
I updated it. I just didn't update the PowerPoint.
Thank you. The other thing that I question is when you get down to the appeal authority, um, why is that the planning- um, why is that the planning commission? We have an appeal authority in the city, why would we send that back to the planning commission?
Um, yep, it, it could be, it could be either, I remember there being some reason why we designated the planning commission. I had the same thought went through my head as I read it in the PowerPoint, and I, it could be either. Everybody on the council knows the difference between the planning commission and the appeal authority now that we got rid of board of adjustment, right?
Yeah, so it's...
And it is a land use issue, depending on where we put it in code, it is a land use issue. We haven't designated where this, what chapter and section and everything this is going.
So who is the appeal authority?
The appeal authority is...
Oh, I mean individual, who is the individual?
Well, we've, we haven't had...
Selected one, haven't we?
We haven't officially selected one. I, since we updated the code, I have reached out to an attorney that we discussed, and he said he would be willing to, haven't formalized it though.
Thank you.
Right, so do we need to have like a conversation about that with the appeal authority versus the planning commission? I mean, is there a consensus on that, that we want to change that to? And the planning commission brought this as their, uh, recommendation?
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a, like, they wanted control of this thing. I don't think it's anything like that whatsoever, um, and the appeal authority traditionally does appeals. Um, wh- wh- he- here's one of the, here's one of the challenges of the appeal authority. They're looking at a land use decision, they're going to look at the five things that they look for. They're probably not as equipped to handle a decision about occupancy. If there's a weird, I mean, I guess they, they kind of are, you know what I'm saying? I mean, they, they interpret code, this is more of, this is, this is like, uh, this is like a hybrid of land use and business licensing, right? Um, it is, it is definitely in the space of land use, um, do, do you want to have your appeal authority looking at something like, we couldn't get ahold of your guy, and that's why we gave you fines, we gave you three fines, you didn't do anything, we revoked it, and they're like, well, you didn't have the right phone number, and, I mean, is that something you want the appeal authority that we're potentially spooling up and paying to do? I don't know, I mean, and, and that's what the appeal authority does, is handles appeals. I don't think we're going to have very many of these things, um, and maybe in the event that it reaches a full appeal of a violation, it's going to be to that level that you do want to have this more formal process? Maybe it's, maybe it's, I mean, it's fine, I don't know.
Dan, if they go to the planning commission first, wouldn't they have the ability to appeal it to the appeal authority from the planning commission?
So, the appeal authority, specifically what, what the appeal authority does, they only get involved when something has happened, a, a decision has been made by the city. The city could be administration, or the city could be the city council, then they appeal it to this other body.
Well, I thought they could appeal the planning commission.
What?
Decisions.
What?
To the appeal authority.
Yes.
So if that's the case, they could go to the appeal authority, I mean, the planning commission, then they'd have another...
They could theoretically go to the planning commission first, then the appeal authority.
Yeah, so this is...
I think our historic preservation, if I'm not wrong, they go first to the planning commission, or maybe we fix that, I can't remember. And then they go to the appeal authority, I can't remember if that's the case or not, so, I don't know.
I think the planning commission, um, step, I mean, I can see the value of it because they're going to be more familiar with the code, but I also...
We still have a lot of remnants in our code, where they come to the planning commission. If somebody comes in for a at-home business license, I didn't use the right words, but you know what I mean? At-home occupation, whatever that is, in a residential zone, if there is anybody who protests it, it goes to the planning commission.
Yeah.
Like, there's some things like that where we have them go to the planning commission, um, and, and, you know, where we, we essentially allow staff to administratively do some things, and then the first level up is, is planning commission, so... I mean, I think that it would be, it would be okay, we could do it either way, um, I really don't care. I don't have a strong opinion whatsoever.
I think the planning commission, they didn't per se ask, but they, yeah, it says, yeah, let it come back to us, you know? So they alluded to that when they said, let's just let it come back to the planning.
And for all I know, that's the way I wrote it, and that's, and they never said something.
And I've only been in a couple of, uh, appeal authority, well, not appeal authority, but, um...
Board of adjustments.
Board of adjustments, is, is a board of adjustment meeting public also?
Yeah.
Because nobody's ever come to, I mean, the ones I went to, the public didn't ever come to you. So I wonder if there's a reason to have it in a planning commission because that is a more common place for, say, a neighbor to say, hey, yeah, they do this all the time, and whatever. If, if that is the goal, you know, if that is the goal to have a place for those concerns to be presented. But if you're saying that same neighbor could go in front of the appeal authority, if that item were to go in front of an appeal authority, then to me, that makes it just kind of up to what we, the preference would be in this ordinance.
Clearly with land use decisions, the best, the best route is the appeal authority. When you get into maybe tiki-taki, um, stuff about, you know, they're trash, they've, they've been problematic, and the city's been hounding them, and finally the city's like, fine, we're going to re, you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
It's almost like it's more, um, enforcement.
Right.
And that's, i- i- rather than a land use decision that's going to affect a permanent, you know, deed, or, or a zone, or a building permit, I mean, this is a business license, a type of business license, and yeah, it is land use, it's temporary land use, is really what it is. Um, even if that, even if they intend to do it for years and years, it is a temporary use of that, of that residence, right? So, I don't know.
I think you'd argue the planning commission where you've got the enforcement the way you've got it listed out.
I, I like the appeal authority.
Uh?
So I think it would be, continue to need to be a discussion, because I like the idea of the appeal authority.
So I would say this, look at this, license denials, that seems to make a better case for appeal authority. Because you're saying you can't use your property that way. Man, I want to appeal that to a land use authority. A revocation on an enforcement issue, doesn't seem like something you're going to spool up the, the official appeal authority about. Maybe we literally deviate it that way, or maybe that's overthinking it, I don't know, but...
So, speaking of those violations, where'd the fines come from? I remember they were referred to Bryanhead's fines.
No, 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 you're talking fees, and we're going to get into fees next.
Well, I'm talking about the fines here, where it's...
Fines are for violations.
But where'd they come from, that, that amount?
Out of the clear blue sky.
But I remember Bryanhead being referred to, Shane says that that's what they are doing up there.
That's not where these numbers came from.
That was point of entry to get...
I know that's not where these numbers came from, because I put them in there and asked...
You just put those in there?
Yep, and I asked the council, how do you feel, the planning commission, how do you feel about these, are these good or bad, or whatever? And there was crickets. They, they didn't have anything to say about fines. Fees, in fact, they made a recommendation that once we have a discussion on fees, we have a public hearing on it, because we got a lot of public feedback on fees.
That's what I got confused about, do you want to, did you have something?
Unless Bryanhead changed the last year, they have a free strike, so there is no fine, you get a strike. You get two strikes, three strikes, you're out, every year, twelve, twelve...
For a calendar year.
Then, just saying, if you get two violations, you get your, you may get your license revoked, yet you have a third, that's such a pattern. So if I'm like, I'm making a killing, because I'm like, oh, I can, I can hear this, I get a first, and then a second, I'll just charge my...
Right, charge it back.
So it's kind of a little bit like, you have three strikes up there, two, two hundred fifty, five hundred, a thousand, yet you can only get two violations before you get revoked, so... It's a little bit weird, and...
And again...
I know the numbers came out of the cloud.
And if we have, if we have, you know, like if we had Addy here and we were talking about the type of things that they do enforcement-wise, they have jur-, they have, what do they call it, officer discretion? We need something like that if you have, you have a, a corporation, and they're not responding, and they are a, a known problem, and our law enforcement keeps going out, keep going out, that's the type of thing you want to hit them with a fine. You want an accountant to look at it and say, wait, why are we writing a check to Parowin City for five hundred bucks? Then they, then they're going to call us, right? If we have the discretion to be able to apply fees like that, we're not going to apply a fee to Bob when it's an honest mistake, and he had a bad renter, a bad short-term renter, and he's like, yeah, I gave that guy a horrible review, he's never going to rent my place again, I'll tell you that. That's not, we're going to go slap a fine on Bob, but, and when I say Bob, I mean Bob literally, not the proverbial generic Bob. Um, you know what I'm saying? If there's discretion there for the city, then we can put a fine on there when we need to, then that's, that's why I like it. But I don't care, that was, we could have three strikes, that works just the same. Other than, the first thing that really feels, they feel it, is when you've revoked it. Now you've got an angry, angry person on your hand. The nice thing about fines is it, it lets you ramp up and let you know we're serious before we're having a legal battle with them because we revoked their permit, so...
I think the public policy behind all of it is to not tie up law enforcement with those types of neighbor complaints.
Or, or impact the neighbors, right?
What's that?
Or impact the neighbors negatively.
Yeah, so if a neighbor makes a complaint, it would, the, it would be thought that the first call would go to the local person that's required to respond within sixty minutes, and that person would resolve it, it's like a noise complaint or something. Um, and if it's not resolved, then law enforcement is called, nobody showed up, no, the party's still going on, I can't go to bed, my dog's, or trom- I, whatever it is. Um, then, when law enforcement's called, in my mind, that would be the first offense. That would be something where there was a problem, it was documented and serious, they showed up, there's two hundred people having a party, um, and it's loud, and nobody responded, and so Addy had to go or his people and say, this is out of control.
And again, I'd still want to have the discretion that this is a very responsible, um, short-term rental owner. They had a bad tenant, um, they are going to do X, Y, Z to try to restrict something like that from happening in the future. Okay, we're not going to give you a fine.
So who's going to have that discretion?
Administration.
Totally administration?
Yep.
Okay, not law enforcement, not just administration?
It does not specify in code, this would fall under the category of code enforcement slash... And, and, and our code enforcement is shades, I, I'm sorry for the, for the metaphor, shades of gray. Sometimes we have law enforcement responding to code enforcement stuff, sometimes we have Keith in the office, sometimes I get involved in code enforcement. There isn't a designated person for every item through our code, so this would fit in that same area. There's times where Addy's going to be the one that's stepping up and enforcing this stuff. There's other times where it's going to, it's going to go through nine-one-one, it's going to come into a city office complaint the next day, and Keith's out of town, and so I call up the guy. I mean, we do not have, we're not that large that we're going to say it's always going to be X, Y, Z.
That was the item I had a question on, is the, without, you have to have approval before you can have an event or a party? I wondered how that administratively processes.
Okay, so let's talk through that, because I think that was important, what's an event or a party? Um, and we talked about putting, my suggestion, which didn't end up getting in, in code, in fact, we never really revisited it, but, um, when you have more guests there than are staying the night, and it's bec- and it's a problem, like, say you rent a house, a normal house, not the one, the large one out on, on Old Highway ninety-one, let's say you rent a house in a neighborhood, and you throw a wedding there. You have clearly have more temporary people on site than are going to be staying there that night in the, in the rooms. That's what I would define as an event or party. We did leave it more vague, the problem with the vagueness is then people that are trying to comply with code don't know what they need to do. Hopefully, they would call the city and say, hey, w- w- we're, we're staying, we're staying, we're skiing up in Bryanhead, we rented this thing, we're going to have some friends over tonight, like, do I have to get an event party? And I'm going to be like, is it more than the number of guests? And they're like, yeah, we can sl- it sleeps eight, we're going to have twelve people here. I'm going to say, okay, I don't want to have complaints, you know, don't be loud, don't whatever, and you're not, and it's going to be fine. But if they say, I'm going to do a wedding, we're going to say, okay, you're going to need to get an event permit. Or, no, maybe not.
So that might need to be on the good neighbor thing, because I think a lot of people just try to fly under the radar, and...
It is.
You know, and so it needs to be, if you're going to have more people here than are registered, or whatever, you need to contact this number.
So this is the good neighbor policy?
Something, I don't know, you know, how we enforce that, that's my concern.
Oh, wait, wait, we did put it in there, I, I said all that stuff, and we put it in. No events or parties which would temporarily increase the number of guests on the property above the occupancy limit or parking capacity without several approval, separate approval from city staff.
Still the enforcement piece, though, but I, I mean, I know we're going to have to work with this and probably tweak it, but, I mean, having had a vacation rental and knowing the kinds of things that happen there, people have events and parties all the time, and they're not going to say, hey, we're having a, a party here tonight.
But nice thing about putting it in there, it's, it's the whole pornography, you know it when you see it.
Mm-hmm.
We know when we have a problem, and we're like, listen, you, for our code, you can't do what you're doing.
Okay.
The, 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 the proverbial call comes into nine-one-one, and our law enforcement responds, and they say, you guys have three hundred people in this yard partying?
Yeah.
You would have had to have got a permit for that, it is right in our code, you have to disperse. That's the idea. I don't think we're going to get that many people calling and asking for it.
Create something that we can work with.
Yeah.
Without it, it doesn't, did you want to add something?
I just want to ask, if I rent, if I'm...
Microphone, yeah.
My question is if I rent an Airbnb for Saturday, and I read the good neighbor policy, how do I call you on Saturday? That needs to be somewhere. And who do I call on Saturday, or Sunday? Maybe no parties on Saturday or Sunday.
Well, what would happen is, is we would shut down an, an event that was not thought ahead and called. I mean, yeah, I don't know, I don't know if I want to go adding a lot of stuff to it, overcomplicating...
Yeah, I just, I know that's very real, because, I mean, it happens a lot.
I don't know how long you want this meeting, there's, there's several holes in this whole thing, but as far as, when, and I don't have a rental in Parowin, so don't worry about it. When somebody makes a reservation, I know nothing.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if friends are going to come over after the ski day, I don't, none of that is anywhere listed, are you going to have a party? Ninety-nine percent of your calls are going to be at ten o'clock when the noise orange is in, in effect.
Mm-hmm.
So that, I would never call Dan after a reservation and say, oh, hey, my guest said that he's going to have a birthday party, is that okay? So, I, you might be overthinking this, it might just go in the good neighbor policy, you might have to, case by case, but...
But here's the thing...
You're probably not going to get...
If you have it in, if you have it in the code, and you have it in the good neighbor policy, then when they show up, how many times, well, if you, if you're my wife, she reads all the rules at anything we do, and she's like, well, there's this rule right here, and I'm like the...
But you're putting this in the business license part of things, I, I would, I probably would never call you...
No, 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 this will also go in the good neighbor policy.
To be honest, I would never call the city and say, I, I think they're going to have a party Saturday night.
Right, but if we have it on the good neighbor policy, and when they do have a problem, we can show up and say, hey, by the way, this is not allowed, you can't actually do a big event like this without getting prior permission.
At the weddings and stuff, but...
You need to disperse.
I mean, I, Carrie's family has come in and rented, actually Molly's neighbor, your sister, I believe, and we all went over there and played pickleball and, and hung out. We did not call anyone, of course, it wasn't in code yet, but, I'm just saying, I think you're maybe over...
So...
Even if that was in code, and I had a rental in Parowin, I do not communicate with the guests, hardly at all.
Sure, but this is, this is what I'm saying, Bob, and council, the alternative is to not put it in there. And then when you have a problem, you have nothing to enforce.
Yeah.
I mean, it's better in than not.
John has shown me, you showed me a couple of signs, we were sitting in the audience, where you'd gone and checked into places, and there were certain things posted.
Yeah, I mean, they, up in Scottsdale, Arizona, this house, you couldn't park on the street, you had to park away, in the property, in the property, can't see cars, and, um, it's five thousand dollar fine, if the police are called. And the, you know, like, if they have a huge party, i- i- it's a huge fine. Actually, sorry, not five thousand, five hundred dollars, but, oh! Hold on, keep, keep going, because I, I have a picture of it, so...
I just remember you showed me, and you were saying they need to be more punitive, and you were like, here are the kinds of things that I've seen on these...
Okay.
So, but what I'm saying is, if you have something like this in there, you know it when you see it, this gives the officer the teeth to say... This gives the officer the teeth to say, for you to have had a, a big event like this, like, let's say they go, okay, we'll be quiet, we'll be quiet, we'll be quiet. And there's, there's a hundred people mulling around in the backyard. Are the neighbors gonna be happy about it? No. Th- we need some sort of teeth to say, okay, we're in the middle of this thing. It is at ten o'clock at night. I need you to disperse. This thing, this occupancy holds eight. You guys are causing a problem in the neighborhood. I do have this thing in code that I can enforce. All but Addy, you need to leave because this is, it's midnight, right? You're not, even if you're promised to be quiet, sorry. And it's, it gives you something to do. Sorry, John.
I have to apologize. Five hundred dollar fine. Here's a sign, and it's plastered in the backyard, in the guest house, in the house. Their rules, big rules. During all hours, noise and music must remain at a reasonable level. Kids playing and making noise in the pool area the same day is fine. Yelling and screaming is not considered reasonable. Between the hours of nine PM and eight AM, any noise above normal conversation must be taken inside the doors closed. First violation, five hundred dollars. Second violation, one thousand dollars. And result in immediate eviction. There will be no warning given. And, and then all the homes in that neighborhood, we don't want hotels in our neighborhood. So it, it was pretty sketchy walking around the neighborhood, having, you know, taking the kids for a walk and stuff, because they had all these signs in people's yards saying, we want homes, not hotels.
So, and
Interesting thing.
I just wanna say, our general approach to this, um, if I could go back to the, to the purpose, our approach has been, let's start with something that is not punitive, that is not extreme, and let's get something in place before it becomes a problem. Um, I know some communities, it's gotten bad enough that they have gotten really extreme. Whether they went too far or not, based on the, what they, they issues, they, their issues that they had, I, I think we could probably debate. Our goal was, like, we, we haven't had, th- these haven't been a problem. I mean, they have been, not been disproportionately a problem. So, the idea was, if we need to ramp it up because it is becoming more of a problem, we put more teeth into our code. But let's start with just enough teeth that we have something on the record, we have something to enforce. Um, and, and from my, my perspective, really, it's, it's on the whole saturation concept. What is the council comfortable with? What I don't wanna do is, is get down the road ten years, and we have forty percent STRs, and that's happened to communities. And then the, and then the public says enough is enough, and then, how do you claw that back when somebody has invested money into it? My bigger thing was, let's have something that's reasonable, and figure out whatever threshold we're comfortable with saturation-wise, and put that in place now. Things like enforcement, we can tweak as we go down the road if they become a problem. But yeah, some of these places, it's like, if there is any indication you're a short-term rental, you're going down, right? And, and some of these communities have had to do that because it's been a problem.
Yeah. And I mean, that was kinda the warning that Planning Commission gave us with Chane up in Brian Head, is he said, it's a disproportionate amount of law enforcement working these. Like, it's, really is a suck on the community.
Well, and I gotta say, um, and I'm not arguing, certainly, John, I hope you don't think I'm, I'm counterarguing you. Um, and, and Mayor, I'm, I'm not arguing with you, but one of the things that came up, maybe by Bob, others as well, said it probably twenty times in public hearing, we are not Brian Head. Please don't regulate us like we're Brian Head yet. When we get to the fees, Brian Head has, has gone to a very extreme level. It, it drives the majority of their law enforcement calls. It is affecting them at that level. And they're like, well, we either increase property taxes so we can hire more officers, or we have the thing that's creating this pay for it. So they created a fee thing to essentially help pay for additional law enforcement officers, because they're responding to drugs, there's, the parties are kind of off the hook, and so that's like the majority of their calls. So they're like, fine, the fee is gonna pay for it. Um, we're not, we're not there, you know, and so, um, but, you know, it, who knows? Things may change.
It's a great discussion. I feel like, you know, we've really, really done a lot of work on this, and I think we're getting closer. I appreciate you saying we still have some things we need to think about. I always think we can improve, but we also know we've gotta get somewhere with this, because prior to this, we did not have code.
So, w- we're not ready to do, move anything forward yet, um, because we still gotta talk fees. I have a very, very, very short thing with fees. I'd like to plant the seed, let you guys think about that. We come back, we tighten up whatever we wanna tighten up, and then, if you're open to it, have a public hearing, and then, and then wrap it up.
All right. So any other discussion? We ready to move on? We will move on to the, now, item fifteen, which is the discussion on short-term rental fee schedule and other fee schedule modifications.
Okay, so, again, we did not put the fees in code, which we don't like to, we, we can change fees by resolution, and it, it gives us a little bit more flexibility. We update our fee schedule once a year. Um, this is a comparison, Cedar City, St. George, Washington County, Brian Head, Hurricane City. Um, Cedar City is probably on the extreme, um, um, l- end of, so not the extreme, but the pendulum swings both ways, right? So Cedar City is on the, the most, the most lax from a fee perspective, and Brian Head is on the, the other side of the pendulum. So, a new fee license in Cedar City is forty dollars, annual renewal, forty bucks. It's a simple, it's a flat, short-term license, lowest in the region. Um, let's jump to the other side of the thing, um, Brian Head. Um, and this is just, I got from their website, so if they've changed something, they have an update of their websites. They have an initial new license of a hundred and fifty-one for a cabin or condo, plus a thirty-dollar fire inspection on the initial side. A hundred and twenty-two dollars per unit annual renewal. And then they have their disproportionate cost fee, that's what they called it, what we were just talking about, which is three, five hundred and thirty-six dollars per cabin, a hundred and ninety-seven dollars per condo. So you can see all that adds up to quite a bit. Um, and it, this doesn't say how often they have to do fire inspections, but I believe it's every two years? Every other year, they do a fire inspection, and they charge a fire inspection fee. Um, Hurricane City has, they have graphics and all kinds of stuff, if you wanna go to Hurricane City's website. Um, they have been actively, very much debating, and I think the mayor's even talked to their mayor about it. Um, they're pretty, they're pretty expensive, three hundred bucks, plus a twenty-five dollar application fee, renewal is three hundred bucks. They have a cap and waitlist system in effect, and they're the highest base fee. So once you hit the cap, they put you on a waitlist. Sorry, we gotta jump back on that subject. The way it's written into our code is, when we hit the ten percent cap, percent cap, this is what it says, "In the event the ten percent cap has been met, the city council shall," John, "by resolution, direct city staff in how to administer the process of permitting new STRs as existing STRs discontinue and as growth occurs." So both sides of the fraction could change the ten percent. So when we hit ten percent, if we ever do, we're gonna, the city council needs to do a resolution to give some administrative guidance, a policy for us to follow, to keep us at that cap. As the total number of housing units changes, and as people come and go, in other words, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. And you guys are gonna be the ones making the judgment call. That's what it says. If you're comfortable with that, or if you hate it, and you wanna put it in code now, we can do that. Okay, back to fees. Washington County, a hundred and sixty bucks. Renewals, the same. It includes a health and safety check. License expires annually. St. George, finally, we have a fifty-dollar base business license. They call it specifically a business license, which, this is this full-time employee and stuff like that. So they really treat it like a business license, and they say that one license may cover multiple short-term rentals under the same owner. No per-unit surcharge. That is a question that has not yet been answered, and it, this is one of the holes that I noticed after this. Bob talked about holes. Are we gonna have this per site, or are we gonna have this per business? If it's a business license, you could have one LC that owns ten, right? Or, so how, when we, when it comes to fees, and it comes to applications and things like that, we have to decide per site or per entity?
Per site.
Per site.
Per site.
Okay, we need to, we need to make sure we clarify that in the code. Okay, takeaways, um, Cedar being the cheapest, Hurricane being the, the most expensive on the base fee, Brian Head layering on the high-cost public safety surcharge. Um, St. George is the most flexible. Washington County, mid-range at a hundred and sixty bucks with explicit annual he- he- health and safety. The regional average, if you're gonna average them, excluding the surcharge concept, is a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty dollars a year. So, questions that we need to discuss as we're doing the fee schedule? Do we wanna have a separate business license required, or do we wanna say a short-term license is the only license they need? I tend to favor the second one. Um, and, but that kinda depended on whether you were doing businesses or sites, right? Um, fire inspection fee, um, this will cost us money. It will, we pay our fire chief now, and it will probably always be him. He's gonna have to go out and do the inspection. Um, he's gonna have a, however many point inspection he's gonna need to go through. And, um, that becomes a, a, a lag. Maybe we don't. Maybe there's not, we're not doing it enough to do it. Whether you wanna do it or not, decide that. Public safety surcharge, you could have a very small public safety surcharge if you wanted to. I think that maybe we would do that if and when it became real, a real impact on public safety. We talked about Addy earlier tonight. This is one area where you can charge somebody if they are causing a bunch of calls. The only other way they do that is when they write tickets. So I thought that was funny. I, I'm the only one that thought that was funny. We do not use law enforcement as revenue generation. That is not our goal. Um, transfer, late fees, these are some of the other fees that I saw. Um, if you're doing an ownership transfer, we have to do administrative stuff. We already said that we're not gonna do that, so maybe that's not a thing. Late fees, uh, we do usually build in late fees with business licenses. Um, if they don't renew in time, cuz we do it on a cycle, and that's when our staff is working on everything, and when somebody's months late, it, it causes them to stop what they're doing and all that stuff. So, here's just some stuff that we're gonna wanna, we're gonna wanna fill in these numbers. Some of them may be zero, and we delete them. Some of them we may wanna put in there, but we do need to do a, a fee schedule. So, I'm going to send out the, this thing on fees. You guys think about what are, what are good fees. And I'm gonna send you, um, just the updated, um, code. We, we've made some little bit of tweaks to it tonight. And we'll come back on the next work meeting and fill in these things, and either write an ordinance or schedule public hearing. Sound good?
Sounds great. All right, we'll move to item sixteen. This is discussions on open space slash parks, parks ordinance.
Okay, um, I don't have a presentation. Yep, we already talked about it all. We just, we're going to let you guys think about it, ruminate on it. I don't know if you've been doing that, or if you wanna come back and, and like, we have a recommendation from city council, I mean, from Planning Commission. Um, the city council, you guys wanted to expedite this. Um, it is new code. New code is much more stressful than existing code that we're tweaking, and that we've lived with for a while. Um, there's some, you know, some borrowed concepts, and some modified concepts, and some new concepts all through here that we're gonna have to live with. So I get the hesitation and the gravity of, of doing this, but I just don't know where to go from there, from where we're at. I don't know if anybody has any input.
Can you move up just a, a little bit more about, oh, the other way.
Do you want me to zoom in to one?
Down.
Down.
Oh, up, up the other way.
Right there, right there.
If you remember the discussion here, that there was some degree of unease, and you guys weren't certain about, was in this, in this model or this thing, we are, um, the city is periodically doing a, an average land value per acre in different zones. And we never really established, are we going to do that by hiring a, an app- an appraiser to help us with that? Um, do we like that model at all? But the way it's written, we need some way to, to value the land, since we're putting a percentage. We, well, we only need it for the fee in lieu of, right? If somebody's just eating land, the value doesn't matter, but
I mean, I know we poked around on it in Planning Commission, or Planning Commission did, and we ran some numbers and did some, you know, calculations to try to find out, was that realistic? Did people think that that was reasonable, things like that? And I feel they were, they were satisfied at that point, but I do think we probably need to have that.
Well, that's the, that's the advantage of the table.
Mm-hmm.
Is you can say, what's the fee per acre if they, if it's a sma- minor lot subdivision, and we're allowing that?
About a larger subdivision. Just say, for instance, uh, the one we just approved tonight for fifty-one acres.
Well, that wasn't a subdivision yet.
Well, not yet. But if he wanted to buy his way out, just say fifty-one acres at your calculation, how much would he have to come out with without putting in one piece of, one square foot of open space?
Okay, so it's gonna be, cuz some of that
R two and R three.
Some of it is R two, and some of it is R three.
Yeah.
Let's just assume it's all R three, which it isn't, just for the, let's do R two, cuz the majority of it's R two.
Okay.
Let's, let's be fair to them. Twelve hundred dollars an acre times fifty-one acres. Who can do that math in their head really quickly? Sixty-two thousand bucks, that's my guess.
So they could actually pay the
If we let them.
Oh, okay.
On a, on greater than ten, that goes to the Planning Commission, I think. No, city council.
Okay.
No, 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 no. City council sets the fair market value. The city may allow a fee in lieu of, a fee in lieu in subdivisions of ten acres or greater upon finding that, yada, yada, yada. Final determination by the city council. No, 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 that's if they dispute it. I know it's in here, and it says who they have to appeal to. I think it's, I think it's like
It, it says the city may allow a fee in lieu in subdivisions, ten acres or greater, upon finding that there is sufficient parkland already available within half mile of the site, or the dedication results in unusable or fragmented, um, open space. And so
I know that it says
The fact that the word may is there means it would be a decision at that point.
And every subdivision is gonna have to go through the Planning Commission for its preliminary plot and its, and its, um, improvement plan. So, I think it says in here, Planning Commission, but even if it doesn't, it would be Planning Commission, because they're the ones that review subdivisions, preliminary plots.
So that
But it would be nice to say it, because I don't want, I don't want that decision to be administrative. The, I don't want it to be the zoning administrator.
So that fifty, ju- you know, just using an example, that fifty-one acres, how many applications for subdivisions could they have in that one area?
Depends on how they phase it.
Okay, so if they phased it
Nine-acre lot plots?
Yes.
Nine-acre plots, they could avo- they could pay fee in lieu of all the way through.
And so that's, that, that's
That's
Very
It's a potential hole in the, in the
Big hole.
In the, uh, thing, yeah.
Yeah. Because, first of all, they, they, so that could be just solid, solid homes. Not one
Not any open space.
Walking path, no bench at the corner. So, so yeah, that, we, we need to put something in there that's would
Plug that hole.
Well, I think we'd, when you evaluated it, you decided not to go by a percentage and just go by, you know what I mean, as a percentage of the hole, there, there, instead of a flat
Yeah.
Amount. Otherwise, if you did that, then you could plug that hole.
It, it, well, it is a percentage of the hole, but the fee in lieu of was designed for smaller subdivisions.
Isn't designed for it, but
Because, I know, it's a hole. I agree, it's a hole.
Big hole.
I'm saying the, the I'm saying the, the, the reason is, is good thinking because if you have a small acreage subdivision, the calculation is gonna be a very small, uh, piece of open space. It may not be very functional to have a, to have a hundred foot or two hundred square foot open space.
No.
Unless they, they, I mean, they could theoretically do it where they do a path and it's like, okay, that, yeah, that, okay, that, thank you, that's good, that, that satisfies the condition. Um, but, but if it's too small, minor lot subdivision, I mean, you could say minor lot subdivision and we could tie it to that. Um, minor lot subdivision, the way we redid it, is three or less, if I remember right. Now, Rochelle's looking at me.
No.
Or less, or three, or more. No, I'm joking.
No, I was just trying to-
I'm joking.
(laugh)
So, um, but, but you, you can get rid of the fee in lieu of, but I'm just saying, it becomes impractical for them to dedicate a very small piece of land.
Yeah.
So, you could, you, there's, there's gonna be a, there, there could, we could creatively plug that hole if everybody agrees it is a hole. And how would you do it? Do you have any ideas off the top of your head, since you've been thinking about it?
We're not voting on it tonight, so-
Right.
I'll probably have some more homework to do. And then it, where it says, where does it say where it's close to a, a park and stuff like that? They would be, where does it-
It's the first point, the first point.
First point.
Um...
Says, for subdivisions under ten acres or where land dedication is determined by the city to be impractical or inconsistent with park planning, a fee in lieu of shall be placed.
It r-
Shall be paid.
Not that way, go the other way. (laugh) Sorry. Didn't you mention?
Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
It's under three and it's A, under three. All right here. Not that one, the other-
Different three A?
Yeah.
The city may allow a fee in lieu of subdivisions in ten acres or greater upon finding that there is sufficient parkland already available within a half mile of the site or the dedication would result in an unusable fragmented open space.
So, (cough) if you get to A, Alex Meisner's complex is very close to a huge, so he could, he could literally-
But again, the, the city may allow.
May.
And we haven't said who the city is. If you wanted to say the planning commission, may allow. It lets the pla- it, you're trusting your planning commission to make, to make good decisions about stuff like this. The default on a ten acre or more is that they dedicate land. The idea is that they are forced to dedicate some land. And then you're saying, there could be some criteria with the city in the driver's seat of allowing them to do a fee in lieu of. And you're giving them some, some wiggle room and we're, and we're giving that to the city. And, and maybe we don't wanna just call it the city, maybe we wanna designate the planning commission. I would suggest you don't get the city council involved on a subdivision by subdivision basis 'cause now you're getting into space that the legislature has specifically... They've herded you guys away from subdivisions, at least one in family and two family type subdivisions.
It seems like pan- planning and zoning is better, too.
Yeah. I agree.
So, just change the city to planning commission.
Yep, but is that enough of plugging the hole to satisfy all y'alls? Or you wanna think about it?
Think about it.
I mean, there could be language that's like the sum total of, so they couldn't just come in with these nine acre, nine acre, nine acre. You could say something about, uh-
Well, you could further, further extrapolate the conditions to be considered to let a larger subdivision. And you could even say if a multiple-phase subdivision eclipses the ten acre mark, it has to be reviewed by-
Mhm.
City council.
Right, something like that.
That'd be good.
If the intent is to avoid this, (laugh) you know what I mean? Something like that.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, we have stuff like that a- all the time, you know, in different code where it's like, listen, we're gonna give you a loophole, but we're, we're gonna plug that loophole if your whole intent is just to get around this.
Re- preemptively ga- and not allowing people to gain the system.
Yes.
I mean, and we can, that would be, I liked your thought about, let's do some homework on that because I think you could, just what you said, but let's keep thinking around that.
I'm gonna do this. I'm gonna highlight this and say, I'll come up with some, with some whole plugging concepts.
Thanks, Bob, for giving us a theme on this one.
Without, wi- without deleting E.
Plugging.
Okay. Anybody, anybody else? I challenge anybody who has never done this to, to try and do this and make it bulletproof and stuff, especially when you're writing new stuff. Okay, what else? Anybody else have any thoughts? Not to put any pressure on you, but I wouldn't be surprised if we have a start of a subdivision application in the next month or two from some recent annexations. So, I would suggest that, and your intent was to let that go through, knowing we were working on this. I can deny an application with a moratorium on this thing that says we're working through this, but it's six months from when we started the process and that's probably four months ago or something like that, so...
Yeah. Has it been that long? It's been a bit.
I don't know. I have a bad concept of time, but it's been a while. Planning commission spent some time on this.
It's been two months.
I bet you it's been, it's been three if it's been a day. So, (cough) we have a little bit of time and, and I know when they come in with an application-
Just at the top of your homework pile for next meeting, we'll do one more, one more work on this.
Yep.
And then hopefully be able to bring it to-
And, and I could, you know, we have, the, the subdivision process has cycles.
Mm-hmm.
I can say, we're not gonna give you final approval till this is done. And if you demand it, it'll just get denied. But if we're working on these other issues while this gets resolved. I mean, it's not like, anyways, we got, we got, we got a couple of meetings, but we do need to wrap it up.
All right, so we'll-
What date are you referring to, Dan, back to?
I'm referring to when the city council directed planning commission to look at it in a, in the public meeting.
This ordinance?
Uh-huh.
The creation of this ordinance.
That's when we, by policy stated, we're going to be changing our ordinance. That's what gives us a six month-
I remember the meeting. I swear it was not four months ago, but time flies.
It was one of the Alex Meisner meeting.
It was.
It was.
Dallas standing right here and he was staring right at me in the eye.
It was one of the ones, one of the later ones when we were talking about Redline and all this and that. And we were like, where do we go with this? We said, well, John just left, but John wasn't comfortable. No, John wanted one thing, he wasn't happy about it, and our attorney said, this feels a little bit icky. And so, we decided to scrap it and, and resolve this. Remember that, Scott? I didn't use the word icky, but some legal version of that.
It's when we were trying to come up with a number and stuff and then they came back and I was like, well, then I guess we should just put this into code.
Don't you love when I put words into your mouth?
So...
Okay.
But anyway.
Where does it say in here, refer to density?
It doesn't. We did it by zoning. That's the way we-
Total zoning, not any density.
But, but zoning is density. That's why, that's the mechanism that did it. 'Cause we had a flat fee-
Right.
That was just, it just ramped up by number of acres across the board. And then we said, listen, R one, where you have big backyards and you have swimming pools and you have playgrounds and your stuff, probably doesn't need as much open space dedicated as R three, where you got people very close to each other. So, we just, we went around and around.
You play in the street. That can be the answer. That's kind of the, that was the meeting.
Yep.
If I remember correctly, so... Um, all right, so we're gonna chew on that, but you got till the next council meeting. So, again, top of the stack in terms of things we're looking at 'cause I think it's also, I agree with you that we need to get through this, um, not rushed, but we need to definitely-
Send it in late.
Yeah, we need to lock in. Um, all right, the next one, if there's no additional discussion, is item seventeen, which is the discussion on updating the procurement code.
Okay, so we had a discussion on procurement code, um, and I promised in that meeting that we were gonna look at disposal of city assets, um, at the same time. They go hand in hand. In fact, as you read through our code, they even go, kinda go back and forth on procurement versus disposal. There is disposal of real property, there's disposal of personal property or non-real property. Um, so, and our, our code was, it was kind of a mess. So, um, first of all, so I have a proposed framework. I'm just gonna stick to the high-level bullet points of the framework. I, I am actually working on code with definitions and all that stuff too, but I just wanna stay high-level at framework first. So, there's reasons for a policy, for most of our ru- policies and stuff like this, right? And the reason why these things go hand in hand, because you can misappropriate funds when you're buying stuff and you can misappropriate funds or do fraudulent activities when you're disposing of stuff. That's why these things go very close together, right? And why we wanna follow really good principles. So, surplus declaration, our old code says, every item over five hundred dollars of value must be declared surplus by the city council. That means every piece of furniture or a computer or anything that has to come to the city council to say, yep, you can get rid of this thing. That's pretty onerous. Um, but you guys are in this, you guys are in the driver's seat. We can definitely do what you wanna do. I would say that's pretty onerous. We have some different disposal methods depending on value we're gonna talk about. But, proposed framework, city manager can approve items less than five thousand. There has to follow a process, by the way. City- This is, this is an estimate of current value. City council approval required only for property above five thousand or real property of any value, right? So, if we have, um, a ten-year-old computer that's broken and we'll talk about it in methods, it's gonna get a valuation of zero and we're gonna throw it in the trash. Um, we, if you've driven down to the yard, Public Works yard, there's a bunch of stuff in that yard that needs to get disposed of. Some of that stuff is gonna literally go straight to the landfill. Some of it could go for recycle or scrap. Some of it needs to be auctioned off, so we get the maximum amount of value back out of it and put it back in our account. All the time, people, both citizens and employees, will approach me and say, hey, when are you gonna get rid of that thing? I wanna buy it. And we have to say, okay, well, what's our process? And, and usually the process, our current process is kind of weird and vague, just like everything else and kinda hard. And so, what happens is we just keep the junk and w- and we may have actually, should have disposed it so we could get some value back out of it at the time, but if the process isn't good enough, we don't. And then it sits for another ten years and now it is junk, right? So, a good process is an efficient way to recapture resources and liquidate them and turn them back in. Or transfer it to another department that can use it while it's still usable and good, right? Anyways, so, this is an idea, this is a concept. This is, this is, by the way, that number is very consistent with our procurement policy of when it hits a level of, we want more eyes on this than the main procurement person who we trust. And at a certain level, you want more eyes on it. This is, this, this gives that level to the city council at five thousand. Dollar thresholds, five hundred dollars for surplus designation, fifteen hundred for personal property treated like real property. That's our current code. I don't, we can go read it, I don't know what that means. Um, this would then say, five hundred or less is de minimis disposal, staff authority. Five thousand, de minimis is a word we use a lot, Dave. Um, five thousand is a threshold for council involvement, aligns with a modern practice. Um, process for surplus property. Department head goes to the city manager to put it on a list. Then it goes to the council to declare it as surplus. Then it goes to disposal. That's our current process. A new concept is, the department head identifies, city manager approves if it's under the threshold or city council declares surplus for larger items. And the, the, the city council's gonna get an annual report on everything that gets disposed in the new proposed thing. So, if you say, what, you got rid of that? And I'm like, yeah, it was valued at three thousand bucks. Well, that was a dumb move. Don't do that again, right? You're gonna see everything, a, a report of everything that gets disposed under the new thing. Under the old one, you're involved in everything. The new one, you get a report of everything, right? Um, disposal methods, personal property, so this is non-real property. Auction or sealed bid only, thirty-day public notice. That's how we're supposed to dispose of everything. The new framework would say, an auction, sealed bid, trade-in, donation, scrap or recycle or negotiated sale, council approval of over five thousand. So, if it, so basically, if we trade in a truck on a new truck, that's approved, right? We've retained our value. Um, if it is scrap value, and by the way, this is a framework, right? We would say, what qualifies for what? There's some things that we're gonna be able to donate, um, if it's, you know, there's, there's things where we're, where, where we're gonna wanna do donations from time to time. It's either throw it away or donate it and we have somebody who, a, a, a nonprofit or somebody that we can give it to, we may do that. And we could specify donations are for nonprofits. Donations are not to city employees, right? Um, scrap or recycle, this is the biggest one. There's a lot of times where literally there's no value and all it is, is gonna be tons of administrative time. Most of these items that are above five thousand, by the way, five thousand, the reason why that is important is because when it needs to go into our, um, inventory system. When we buy an item, it's defined as a capital asset that has to get recorded and depreciated in our, in our accounting system as a capital asset. So, in order to take it out, um, we need to go through the process to remove it and do all that stuff. So, that's why that's a typical number. Now, back to Larry's comment, um, it goes in as a capital asset at five thousand. It could be disposed if it's now scrap. We still have to take it out of the system. Um, anyways, negotiated sale would be something that the council would be involved in. Um, what, what I want to avoid, um, by the way, do not think for a second this is a power grab. I wanna avoid putting me or any administrative staff that you would designate in a situation where you have employees and even the public that says, hey, can I have that? Or can I buy it? I'll give you a fair value for it. If there's fair value left in it and it, it really needs to be auctioned. That's the best principle to get the maximum dollars out of it. I, I do, I'm never comfortable with something of any significant value being some, showing some sort of favoritism. I don't wanna be accused of that. I d- I, like, like, there's, the county, they had some, some cool license plates and some stuff like that. You guys know that I collect automotive stuff and I'm like, I want that. And they're like, here, we'll just take it. And I'm like, no, like, no, it offends my auditor stuff, right? I, I, we wanna have good methods, but by all means, when it's trash, it's trash. If it's in our system, take it out, throw the thing away, let's not... Like, it takes a lot of time to do one of these auctions and to get it ready, right? So, let's have a smart system that lets us get rid of stuff.
The, the biggest problem that I have seen over the years is employees or in my most recent issue, public official, obtaining the item, whatever it is. And it doesn't matter whether it's fifty dollars or five hundred dollars. It's just, wait a minute, he got that? Well, we declared it, it was disposable property, we're just gonna throw it away. Why don't you throw it away in my yard?
Yeah.
And some have opted that, uh, city employees, city officials cannot obtain any property that isn't obtained through sealed or through the auction or the bid process.
One thing I like about having a, a report to the council of every item, even stuff where we scrapped, because it shines the light of day on, wait, you scrap your Glock forty-four that we just bought new guns and you scrap the old one? Okay, no, 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 no. I wanna be there at the trash can when you threw that thing away, right?
Yeah.
I agree. You know, we can call it scrap and then give it away to, you know, we, we wanna avoid any impropriety like that.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna design it that way, one way or the other. Um, disposal methods, auction or sealed bid after thirty-day notice in the newspaper- Um, disposal methods, auction or sealed bid after thirty day notice in the newspaper and posting three places. Council may authorize exceptions, that's our current thing. That's why we have a bunch of s- stuff sitting down at the Public Works Department that needs to be gotten rid of, right? Cause that's a, that's a lot of work. Um, oh, sorry. I jumped into real property. We were at personal property, we jumped into real property. Real property says all of these things. The proposal, state code actually says the process for disposing of real property. We wanna point our code at what the state code requires. Public hearing, public notice and a public hearing. Public notice doesn't always have to be in the newspaper anymore. They're getting more and more and more away from that, because newspapers aren't how things are done. Um, we can, we can just point it at state code and say that's the minimum. Um, right now, we have, we have disposed of some real property, we've done some trades and stuff. We have brought those, and we've had a public hearing. Um, by the way, we have not put it in the newspaper in three places. Um, we have followed, it, it, it's kinda says it here one way and it says it here another way. We've chosen to follow one place of our code where it says you have to have a public hearing and all that stuff. We've done that. But I would like to just clean that up and just point it at state code. Record keeping is not addressed in our current rules. I would like to, um, description, disposal method, value price, and retention per grandma rules. Government Records Access Management Act, just in case anybody knows, this is not grandma's rules. Efficiency, um, heavy council invi- involvement, redundant outdated notice requirements. The new one, I want streamlined, transparent, preserves council oversight where appropriate, and modernizes notice. That's essentially what we're trying to do.
Wait, will you go over your exceptions?
Here, let's jump up to, let's jump up to the bullet points, cause then we can get actually into the things. Um, disposition methods, auction or sealed bid, that's default for valuable items. Trade-in allowed when acquiring new equipment. Direct sale, when approved by the council in the best interest of the city. Remember, we sold that property to South Central Communications where their thing was, that's a direct sale, where we would not auction it, but sell it to a specific party. Those are gonna be extremely rare, but we wanna have that allowed. Donation for items of minimal value to nonprofits or schools. Scrap and recycle if no sale value exists. Exceptions, boundary line agreements, easements, and rights of way. May be approved by the council without a surplus declar- declaration. Intergovernmental transfers may be handled by negotiated sale or agreement. If we're gonna sell something to the county, or do a trade with a county, or something like that, we don't have to go through a full bid process to let the public bid on stuff, right? De minimis property, under five hundred, made to be disposed of administratively without council action. Um. Record keeping. So that's the framework. I can kind of further develop the, the code, wrap it in with the procurement code. Cause right now, I presented these as separate concepts, in our current code, they literally kinda do this. I would like to roll them all together into, into code and give it to you guys and let you, let you think through it.
That's really good work, thank you.
Just, just trying to make things efficient.
And it's, you know, it's a direction for sure. Anyone have any questions, input, anything you wanna add to this? Or are we good with what we've got in front of us for now, and we can, with fresh brains, look at it? Cause I know it's hard to look at stuff like this at this point in the meeting and really be able to.
I'm gonna be sending you guys a bunch of stuff from tonight's code stuff.
Homework.
Make, I was gonna say, make sure there aren't any holes.
Homework.
Need to be plugged.
Plug the holes.
Plug the holes. All right. So, we are now moving to, it's not, it's updates. And we need to start with, I, this is a tough one for me tonight. I think we'll start with Councilmember Burton.
Well, I think we discussed most of the things that the planning zoning did at their meeting, except, uh, cause we talked about Surtur and Rendell and the, we, they did discuss the fence ordinance and decide to take that further and before they arrived at any decision on that. So, I think, and then the, uh, the start preservation met, they approved a banner for the, what is it, Sabo or Latino? And there was some discussion on the banner as far as talking about whether they want to start regulating banners versus signs, so I guess that's gonna be some more discussion there. Which, yeah, so I don't think there's anything to talk to about that unless you have some opinions on that. Uh, I guess I could go into what everybody was, you know, texting back and forth yesterday about the cemetery fence, but I talked to Aldo, he concurs with me that the, and I'm sure Dan's been involved in this, that the pillar can be, can be fixed, salvaged, it was, you know, it showed that that was really put together well, that pillar and, and everything's intact, and so the, they'll have to evaluate, but they think the wrought iron can be salvaged. They'll, they'll see whether there's any welding or have to be refabricated. But there is that cement that I alluded to, that the, will have to be replaced underneath the damaged wrought iron.
By the way, we are going to pursue the driver's insurance policy. I did talk to our insurance as well and got some guidance on that, so.
Okay. But I said, yeah, he, he mentioned that, and that, so for right now, they've got it, you know, ba- whatever you call it, taped off, and it'll be an eyesore, but it is being worked on and it will be. I looked at it and it looked like that maybe that rain coming down that gutter softened that dirt, and there was a sprinkler there, so. It was soft, and it went, so that was good.
Soft landing.
Well, the dirt was soft, so it gave. And, um.
But it was a DUI, and he did run from the cr- the, so, this was not a, just an accident. This was a, this was a, this was a problem. I'm grateful that he didn't take out headstones.
Yeah, there was some nice ones there.
That would be a mess.
Yeah, I, yeah, I better not say that, so I'll let that go. I had a comment, but anyway, um, the water projects moving forward, oh, that's what I wanna talk to, I talked to Aldo about the pressurized irrigation, and, uh, right now, there, let's see, the east side should be back on. The west side will be turned off during the day from the ten to four because of this construction and because of the danger, as I'm sure, if anybody's aware, they tried to leave one of their lines in operation that was unsupported and it gave, and it damaged, you know, the, it shot, uh, the pressure, the water shot, I guess, road base into windows of that condo and busted it, and some cars, and so. There's a, there's a hazard, a risk, you know, a danger factor with having that on during their, their operation of to put installing that water line, those water lines in this recharge and irrigation project, so.
And we're rerouting and deleting some lines, so, I mean, there's some complete, there's some that are shut off for safety, and others, we literally have to shut off so that we can reroute lines. It's, it's a, it's a really complex project up there. We know we're, we're, we're putting people out, but it cannot be helped.
There'll be some hammering and things just in the process with air and so forth, so people just have to realize that if it's too much, they will shut your water off if you want, you know, if you want it left off. Um, but, yeah, that's, moving forth, there was something I wanted to say about that, but, uh, oh, I can't remember, but it was something about the water, I was talking to Aldo, but all the dates will, will correlate when the irrigation company, the reservoir company, they're gonna, they're trying to make it through Labor Day with the, before they turn the Yankee off. And when they do that, then we'll have to evaluate. He wants to do it in a graduated process of, if we have to make an adjustment, it'll go to one day first before consideration of shutting it completely off, but hopefully we can go through a graduated process with the PI system to, you know, allow some watering until it's shut off. But that's, it, it's just gonna depend, I'll see how things go with the irrigation company, the reservoir company. And I think that's all, I've got a headache, I'm sorry. I can't even think.
Thank you.
I hope it wasn't this meeting.
Councilmember Downey.
Uh, last week was kind of busy. I was in the office and the mayor said, why don't you come to a meeting with, uh, what's his name, John Curtis?
John Curtis.
John Curtis representative. And I wasn't gonna go, but I did, and it was great. They seem like they're very well wanting to help us. They are really trying to help rural communities. And they said to give them a call in January and see what they can do to help us. It was, they were great, just absolutely fantastic.
They wanna rule communities or help rural communities?
Whatever the way you wanna say it.
Well, it's different.
And then?
I'm sorry, I didn't pick up on.
Rural.
You have, you have a headache, so.
Yeah.
And then last Friday, Jeremy and I went down to Saint George, and we went to a meeting with Celeste Malloy. And she allowed all these questions, and, and what it comes down to is they are really trying to push through the House for permitting to go faster. And if they do that, we can get some of these programs for electric going fast. Fingers crossed. But it was, it was great, great to be with them, and, and they really wanna help us. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
I have nothing until next week, so, next meeting I'll have a few items.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I'm with John on that.
Okay, it's my turn. All right, so update on the fire department. They are having a great turnout at community events, like for the parade, the mud bogs, um, the derby fireworks. Lot of, uh, good activity with the volunteers. They've been doing some trainings on pumping, and pumping with, um, Paraguna. And working on, so everybody can work on different engines, just in case they get put with a different engine that they're not familiar with, they're able to run it and operate that efficiently. They also had liflight land a helicopter at the fairgrounds, and they trained on how to set up landing zones and how to effectively, um, load patients into liflight the right way. And then I just wanna thank also, like, Roy Spartan and his wife invited, um, Chief Cavalieri over to his home, kinda just gave them the layout of, like, how he runs things as far as, um, how to track calls, um, hose testing, hydrant testing, different kinds of trainings they could be doing, and how to improve our ISO ratings. And so I know, um, Chief Cavalieri was very thankful for, um, Chief Barton over there to invite him into his home and then just kinda show him the ropes of what we need to do better as a city to get on top of some of these things that we need, that we've been lacking in the past. Um, the school, so the Perrin Fieldhouse ribbon cutting is going to be on Wednesday, September third, at three, at, from three to three thirty. And then they'll have like a little program to follow. Um, I did share a little post on, uh, social media today, um, inviting people, anybody's invited to come out, so. It's just right after Labor Day, so Wednesday, next Wednesday. That's all I have.
How's school going so far? Off to a good start?
Um, it's busy. Yeah, it's great.
All right, city manager, what do you got for us?
Hey, so cemetery fence, we talked about, um, uh, next steps in the FBO process. Um, we are going to invite, um, some of the members of the council have expressed the, the, uh, I, the, um, opinion that they would really like to get eyeball, the eyeball with some of these, um, people. It's a big decision, um, so we're gonna try to arrange either, um, I mean, the airport board spent time with them, but I know it's a bigger decision than that. So we either have them come out here in person, um, and, but if we have the whole council together, it's a public meeting, we need to notify, notice that, so we may do that, like a work meeting type thing, or we'll do an interview, or we have two of the council and, and have the others on Zoom where they can't participate or something, I don't know. But we are gonna arrange to have, um, the two that, most of you have been, um, meeting with Mick and ta- talking with Mick, and are familiar with Mick, and it's the others that you're not really familiar with. So we're gonna give you an opportunity to at least meet them or get to know them a little better in the next probably two to three week window on these two other firms. So more information to come there. Police department, um, you may have noticed that, um, with the contract, contracting with the county and, and with the courts, we have freed up that space. We have moved the, the police administrative assistant, Nicole, into, um, the office there. We actually had removed the bulletproof glass from that office. Keith didn't need it, or actually Keith's predecessor didn't want it, but we kept it, good thing, cause it's like, I'm not gonna tell you how thick, it's thick plexi, it's, it's, it's bulletproof. But it was, I'm sure, very expensive and custom built. We were able to basically reinstall it, um, with our own staff, um, our building maintenance guy. And we've, and Nicole has moved back into there, we're, we've kind of changed our signage around, everything except for that big sign right over there, and we may move that. So when, when the public comes in and wants to meet with our police department, they will go to that office, and we'll have little signs. Maybe we'll do a little Facebook post, a little friendly thing, hey, we've moved, this is how you come and talk to us. Please come visit, something like that, but just making everybody kind of aware of that. Um, the only other thing that I have, and I've, I think we can all agree, I've talked enough tonight, is, um, the, the SUU Head Start, we had a meeting with, um, SUU and the school district, and, um, on the potential moving of that. And we have some very, um, significant factors that we were unaware of when we passed that resolution. And we need to bring that back to the agenda, to another agenda. So I'll get some information out to you of kind of summary of some of the things that we talked about, some challenges. Um, SUU Head Start, they wanted to reiterate that they want to work with us, but there's some major, major hurdles that we were, that you guys were unaware of when you passed that resolution. So we need to bring that back and discuss it again, that'll be next time.
Do you wanna talk anything about the bridge?
Um, bridge, we, um, we've just, we have periodic meetings a lot, and it, it, the bureaucracy of it is, is, is sometimes head scratching. But UDOT is anything, if they're anything, they're very thorough. The amount of eyes, the amount of expertise that looks at every last piece of this is impressive. Now you understand why the engineering costs so much when you go through this process. But they are, um, achieving, um, final design. They should have, um, final design approved very shortly, and something that we can share with the public. Um, and we will do that. We'll share that with the public, and they will, very shortly after that, be going out to bid. Construction of that is supposed to be this winter, so, um, everything looks to be on target. Um, and we had a, we had a public hearing, we got a lot of input from the public, and I was really happy to see them work with that input and actually modify the design. Um, we ended up having a sidewalk on both sides, one of them with a, with a pedestrian, um, lane, active transportation lane. So with going to the culvert design, we were able to go, go a little bit wider. So with going to the culvert design, we were able to go, go a little bit wider and have the, have the sidewalk on both sides. Really happy about that and, um, the design has gone well. Um, it's, this is really, this is really tricky, the utility stuff. Um, they're still trying to iron out some of the utility stuff. We did just barely sign everything from the utilities that the city has to deal with. Mainly it's electrical. Um, subcontractors will be moving all of the power, the water and sewer and all that stuff. And we will just be on site with our electrical while they're doing that because there's certain things they have to do to, to modify that. But it's all going very well. Um, we've had a little bit of reach out by citizens that live across that small bridge to the south and we've shared all of that with the, the team. That bridge will be the very last thing to be removed. They will leave that in place throughout construction. We weren't sure how they were going to go about keeping, keeping access to those citizens and, and it turns out the way they've worked it is they will keep that small bridge in to the very end and then that'll be the last thing removed. So we have, we've hired Jones and DeMille, I brought that to you guys, to design the canal work that'll be on either side of the bridge. And, um, Jones and DeMille hasn't been able to get me a final price of that because they couldn't get the final, it's not final, but they couldn't get the, the plans from Jacobs until Jacobs was comfortable sharing it. Finally got that handshake to happen and they shared it yesterday. So we should have a update from Jones and DeMille on their cost. And then we have work that we've got to do this fall in that. So the timing of it is just critical. We're trying to manage it all, coincide with this other water project. Um, we're asking Public Works to do a lot of things that is not what Public Works does. They're not a construction company and we're using them like a multi-tool, including a lot of construction stuff. Um, in areas where they can, where we do have the expertise in the equipment. We're asking a lot of them. I do want to throw a shout out, um, I've been using the metaphor that we're, we're, we're running Aldo and his crew like rented mules lately. And, um, th- they're really working hard and getting burned out. So if you see them, give them a pat on the back, they are working their tails off.
Yep, dirty from head to toe. I asked, I asked Billy today, does he have a, like a place to hose off before he goes in to take off? I mean, it's, it's like that day after day and also on top of that sweating and sweating. Like when Aldo came in today, I thought he was crying. He was just sweating a lot. And he might have been crying, but he could hide it in his sweat because there was that much sweat going on.
And this, this water project, we're, we're doing, like they're...
Yeah.
The utility conflicts are just so, this is not a simple project. And, and they're, we're, we're working hand in hand with them. Normally on something like this, you'd say, "Put it in the bed and do it." But in this case, every dollar we can save on that project saves us money.
Mm-hmm.
And we can ea- they can either fix it themselves at their contractor price and then do a change order and we pay for it, or we can be right there side by side and do the thing that we could do better and quicker and faster.
Yeah, and then just discovery process of uncovering this stuff because it was documented one way and it's different. I mean, there's a lot of, I'm just going to call it discovery, that you're pivoting constantly out there, you know, in real scenarios that are. So appreciate the patience of the community on, we already talked about the PI system and really the draw on that and what that all means. It's, it's not...
But we're turning off culinary on and off in areas to...
Dan, perhaps he ought to, you know, state that they're hopefully gonna, the diversion structure part of it's going to go out to bid.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're hoping, we're going to be given the bid schedule for the diversion project next Wednesday.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And we'll be able to announce that, so.
Yeah. So that, I mean, when I ta- I talk about big boulders, those are the two big boulders right now. The recharge project and the bridge. Um, obviously there are other things too, but those are big ones. And then we still have the inner workings for the airport road and the infrastructure, working on the EDA grant. That's another big, big boulder that's on the horizon, but a lot of administrative right now.
One sentence on that, I'm hoping to bring an agreement to the city council to do the property trade for the realignment of the airport road. We have given an ultimatum to the property owner. He ha- he can either accept an incredible gift on a platter or we fix the road in its existing horrible alignment. But we are at the point of no return. We have to apply and we have to own what we're going to build it on. So his representatives are meeting with him this week. He can either accept an incredible deal or, or he can say, "Out of spite, go pound sand and then we fix the road in the existing location." It would be a horrible move for him and for us, but we got to move on. We can't let an eight million dollar grant not happen because we don't like the alignment of the road.
I'm sorry, who did you, who was that you mentioned?
I'd rather not mention his name.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
But I'll tell you all about it.
But if you're a, yeah, if, if you're a vibe person, send good vibes, you're a prayerful person, prayers. I mean, this is, would re- be really great if it, if good decisions are...
And, and we have been more than fair.
Yeah.
At this point, he needs to make a good decision. So.
Um, so that is, you know, the third, I, I see that as the third big boulder out there. But meanwhile, there are all these other things going on and, um, you know, I hope that everyone appreciates the effort because it's tremendous by our staff and our, all of our different, um, teams. Um, still exploring options for the library, still exploring, you know, a federal grant on that as well as potential locations. You know, we've got a lot going on with the library and things to consider there. We'll bring more. Dan suggested we take the council on a field trip to the library to really allow the council to see what we are working with here because you also don't want to throw good money after bad money and there is a lot that needs to happen in that building. And it's like, how much money do you want to put into the Pizza Hut?
The Brown Pizza Hut.
I mean, it's a thought, so just be also considering that if you have time, you know, um, walk around that building. But we might do a field trip as well. Um, still, you know, our, Scott brought it up, we're still exploring post office ideas. You know, it's a federal government deal, but we're putting some ideas out there and talking to people and trying to figure that out. I mean, if it's possible, we're gonna, we're gonna help with that concern from a few of the members in the community. Don't know really how extensive those concerns are, but we're, we're looking at that. Um, we have, I have so many little weird notes and I feel like everyone's fried and probably doesn't care anyway. But I guess the, the, oh, I know, I had a question about what I said in the last meeting about council members needing to bring things to the agenda in twos or threes. And both Dan and I looked, I was questioned about that and so we looked through our ordinances. We haven't found anything, so we don't know if it was just tradition that that was what happened. But council can bring things to the agenda, just like a citizen can. You can, you know, say, "Hey, there's something we might want to discuss." And, um, if you find that ordinance, we weren't able to, but we think that that was just maybe tradition and what was passed along, but...
Well, what, what we know is in, is in sixth council form of government, it is the mayor's agenda. But there is no mechanism to, for the mayor, to force the mayor to put it on. It isn't in the code. And it is a lo- oftentimes in city code established of how to do it, it isn't in ours.
But we had, a couple of us had been told that, so we thought that, we were trained that way.
You were told you had a three.
Yeah, three. So, so now not being able to find anything, we're like, okay, well, we need, is it really a thing? So we're gonna, we're gonna chalk it up to that had maybe been...
I thought it was two.
Yeah, well, there's two or three.
I challenge you to find it, because I have looked.
A challenging...
If you do, I will buy you a Coke.
There we go.
Oh, that's more worth more than that.
And so I guess the point I'm, I'm making in this is the council feel free, as well as the community. Um, I did have a member from the community come to us this week and want to have a discussion about maybe lights off at a certain time for the city because this individual really enjoyed when the power went out and you could see the Milky Way and all the lights are really polluting our beautiful Perrin. And so I'm like, how do I bring that to the agenda? That's a pretty vague conversation. And he didn't want to bring it to the agenda, but he was asking me to bring it to the agenda. So I've got agenda item request on my mind tonight. So I guess my point is, is it's community as well as council, if there's something you want to bring to the agenda, we do have a process for that. You fill out a form, you bring it to, uh, bring it, you know, the office provides it and then you can all review it and most of the time, I actually, since I've been mayor, have not denied an agenda item.
No, you haven't.
Okay, so just, so that's out there and...
But if the council wanted to put it in code, we could, we could put it in administrative code.
Yep.
Ri- right now you have a mayor that's very, very...
Accommodating.
Accommodating, it may not always be the case.
Yep. All right, and that's, I think, all I have. We do not, oh, wait, do you have anything?
I have nothing, thank you, Mayor.
Um, Callie, do you have anything? You've stayed here all night, do you have anything? I was thinking it was for someone else, it was for me, Paul. Okay. Thank you. Um, all right, so we don't have a closed session tonight, so we have one motion left to make.
I move to adjourn.
I second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, adjourn.
When's the fair start?
It started.
Has it?
Yeah, but it didn't really start until the weekend.
Rodeo, is there rodeo tonight?
Friday night.